Disculpen un momento, si necesitan servicios de traducción para esta junta, visite nuestra sala de control de video para obtener ayuda. Gracias.
Okay, good afternoon, everybody. It is now 5:17 PM and I'm calling to order the regular board meeting of the Board of Trustees for the El Paso Independent School District for December 13th, 2022, scheduled at 5:00 PM. Item number two, let's all rise for the pledges of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. Allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, indivisible. Okay, I want to, for a moment of silence, I want to ask Ms. Carla Gonzalez to please come up.
Mr. Velarde, Board of Trustees, Ms. Sayvedra, thank you so much for allowing us to take this moment of silence and dedicate it to the memory of one of our own leaders. Dr. Sarah Chavez Gibson, who is principal of Stanton Elementary in Northeast, lost her battle a very vout... Always think I can do this. Lost her battle, a very valiant one, with cancer on Thanksgiving Day just a few weeks ago. Sarah, if you did not know her, was a fierce advocate for her students, for the Stanton Stallions, for her teachers, for her community. She was the leader of the Stallions for seven years and a member of our EPISD family for 20. I can't tell you how many times Ms. Tovar, Ms. Torres, and I had to convince her she needed to take care of herself and that we would take care of her kids for her. She was that dedicated, it was very difficult for her to leave her post. In her honor, this evening, there is a special PowerPoint. We'd like to take just a few moments to share with you because I can tell you how wonderful Sarah was and what a great leader and what an advocate and how much she loved those kids, but I think this PowerPoint will demonstrate that just as well. So, in Sarah's honor, if you could please, a moment of silence as we prepare the slideshow for you. There'll be quite a legacy that she'll leave to Stanton and to all of us who knew her and got to work alongside her, but one of her quotes on her website as a leader, a message to her students, was this, "Success is not an option, but an expectation." I think the only two people in the world she probably loved more fiercely than her Stanton Stallions was her daughter Sarah and her mother, and we have a plaque to honor her that we will be getting to the family. It simply reads, "In recognition of Dr. Sarah Chavez Gibson, Principal Stanton Elementary School, 2015 to 2022. In recognition of her 20 years of service to the El Paso Independent School District, her dedication and service to her students and staff is appreciated and admired. Thank you so much for remembering her with us."
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez, and may God bless Dr. Sarah Chavez Gibson. We will now go on to item number four, recognition. So, if I can ask all board members to go ahead and go to the front of the dais, please.
(Applause)
Thank you. Good evening, Board President Velarde, Superintendent Sayvedra, and members of the board, and happy holidays. I am happy to be here today to end 2022 with more recognitions of the wonderful work being done in every corner of EPISD. We hope you enjoyed the wonderful seasonal songs from the Burgess Choir and earlier today from the Chapin-Mareachi that was playing for us in the lobby. In the spirit of the season, for our first recognition this evening, we would like to recognize some amazing student artists who helped us design the official EPISD holiday card. First, second, and third place winners were recognized in three categories, elementary, middle, and high school. Due to the incredible artwork by our students, we were unable to select just one overall winner, so we will feature three first-place winners as one district holiday card. Our first-place winner for the elementary category is Anel Torres from Douglas Elementary School. Thank you. Our next first-place winner for the middle school category is Camila Muñoz-Arieta from Don Haskins. And the winner in the high school category is Juan Salgado from Chapin High School. And now can I have everyone photo along with Mr. Barasa and Ms. Smith, who are the leaders of our great fine art programs at EPISD? Can I have everyone up for a group photo, please? And if anyone doesn't know the artwork, their designs were featured prominently in the holiday card the superintendent's office sends out to dignitaries and other VIPs throughout El Paso and the region. So, please join me again in congratulating them all.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations.
Our next recognition is for the top CCTE students that competed in the 22-23 FFA Fall District Competition. These students worked very hard on their vet skills to compete and represent El Paso ISD and advanced to the area competition. The following students placed first in senior skills category. Can you please come up when I call your name? Gwynn Collins from Silver Magnet. Dia Ganduquente from Silver Magnet. Abigail Guerra Morales from Coronado High School. And Ana Villarlicón from Silver Magnet. Please join me with a big round of applause to congratulate all these students. We can squeeze in for a group photo? I don't think we can see Mr. Velarde. If teachers or parents want to join the photo, please do. Any teachers, parents, principals? Thank you. Congratulations again. Our next recognition is for a previous Secondary Teacher of the Year from Coronado High School. This teacher was selected for the University of Chicago's Outstanding Educator Award. This distinguished award has existed for more than three decades. Students accepted into the University of Chicago, class of 2026, were asked to nominate an educator whose guidance has helped them along the path forward intellectually and for intellectual growth. Responses were received from thousands of students in recognition of educators who have positively impacted their lives. Let's welcome Mr. Gerardo Torres with a big round of applause. Can I have you in the middle for a photo? Congratulations. Oh, another photo. One more photo. Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. Our next recognition is a group of 21 teachers from various campuses throughout the district. The EPISD Education Foundation awarded more than $17,000 in classroom impact grants for these 21 teachers. These grants, which are up to $1,000, help fund innovative projects in the classroom. The grants are used for creating new solutions for STEM, Adulting 101 for special ed students, theatrical makeup projects, early childhood classroom science labs, and the list goes on and on. Joining us from the foundation board to congratulate this year's recipients are Board President Russell Wiggs and board members Tricia Ramsey and Laura Ostos. Let's welcome the following teachers. Accepting for Denise Ortega and Jarette Bolton from Bobby Joe Hill is Mr. Joel Peña, Assistant Principal. Rebecca Manriquez from CCTE. Rebecca Manriquez from CCTE. Lisa Ann Schoenbrun from Franklin High School. Also from Franklin High School, Don Minchaca. Our next two teachers are from Lundie Elementary, Tanya Esquivil. And Denise Almares Valencia. From Esita ECDC Patricia Castaño. From Navarete Middle School, Sabrina Ortega. From Park Elementary, Julie Porflit. From Rusk Elementary, Jaime Reyes Jr. From Trans- the next two from Transmount Early College, Marlena Honholdt and David Honholdt. Congratulations to you all, if we can have you squeeze in for a photo, please. There we go, there we go. Yeah, maybe with Miss- Everyone, there we go. Thank you, and thank you to our foundation for supporting our teachers. Thank you, congratulations, thank you, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Our last recognition of the evening is from MNK Architects. Mr. Juan Gallegos and Ms. Renee Jimenez are here to present the award to the board.
Good evening Board, Dr. Sayah Vedra. My name is Renee Jimenez and I'm here with my team, Eddie, Miguel, Angel, and Juan. We are here to present a very special award to EPISD for the Burgess High School Transformation Project. Learning by Design is a national magazine that recognizes top schools around the country that showcase education design innovation excellence, and we are proud to announce that Burgess High School has earned an outstanding project award for the fall 2022 across the entire country. We would like to thank the leadership team at Burgess, as well as the community because they were very much involved in the design, and this board here tonight for your vision. We at MNK Architects are proud to have been able to deliver your vision, to be recognized at the national level in an achievement you should be proud of, and we would like for you to share this with the families of Burgess High School and the rest of the community, congratulations.
Maybe Ms. Sayah Vedra, or someone holds the award, we can't see the award. There we go. There we go. Thank you. Thank you, this concludes this month's recognitions.
We will continue, we are now going to go to item number five, Public Forum. Ms. Hanani, can you go ahead and discuss the particulars with Public Forum, please?
The district is a local government body charged with serving the educational needs of all schoolchildren in our district and board meetings must be focused on meeting this charge. In meeting that charge, the district board meetings are public meetings under the Texas Open Meetings Act to conduct business of the district. They are not, however, meetings of the public. Therefore, all persons in attendance are expected to display civility and decorum that is respect for the persons without the use of insulting, profane, threatening, or abusive language. Public comment will not be used for personal attacks. In addition, you are directed to the district's complaint procedures and board policy regarding employee, student, parent, or public complaints. The Deputy Superintendent of Administration is in attendance if you wish to discuss a matter with him. Please note that during Public Forum, specific factual information or recitation of existing policy may be furnished in response to inquiries. However, the board may not deliberate or decide any subject that is not posted on its agenda. For Open Forum, I have two speakers, the first is Norma De La Rosa.
You'll notice I have nothing on me tonight. Good evening, Mr. Board President, Mr. Velarde, members of the board, Ms. Sayah Vedra. This evening, I will be short and to the point. We are here on behalf of El Paso Teachers Association to wish you and your families a very happy, safe, and healthy Christmas, and a very happy, safe, and healthy New Year, and please enjoy the time with your families. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our last speaker for Open Forum is Ross Moore.
Board President Velarde, board members, Ms. Sayah Vedra, my name is Ross Moore, President of the El Paso AFT. I was going to entertain you with a three-minute medley of Burt Iverson songs. However, my wife said she'd have me committed. So in lieu of that, on behalf of the members, the officers, and the staff of El Paso AFT and myself, wish you a happy Hanukkah, a Merry Christmas, that your 2023 is better than your 2022. And on that note, Merry Christmas, and to all a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes Public Forum.
Thank you, Ms. Hanani. We will now move to item number six, Reports. Item 6A is Report on School Attendance Boundary Process.
Yes, thank you, President Velarde and trustees, Maribel Masias. Our Chief Organizational Transformation Equity Officer is going to share a timeline for us to begin to launch a boundary process going forward. She'll sell- share a timeline, plans that we have in the works to bring you a process to adopt and for consideration in January.
President Velarde, Superintendent Sayah Vedra, members of the board, today I'm here to share with you a draft student attendance boundary process. With your feedback, our goal is to create standard operating procedures that will be included in our policy FC Local or refer to it. That way, all of our processes moving forward are documented strategic and in line with your vision. Today, I'll share with you an overview, planning guidelines, the school attendance boundary change process, decision principles, development and approval process, and proposed timeline, and of course, our action plan. EPISD will annually review its attendance boundaries. That's something that we want to do every year moving forward. With this, we're going to adequately address enrollment trends, any new programs within our campuses and throughout our district, as well as ensuring that our staff capacity and student capacities are within normal operating guidelines for each of our schools. Balancing school enrollment across campuses and throughout the district is essential to ensuring that each of our students has access to a safe and engaging learning environment. These are our planning guidelines that we are proposing at this time. Anytime that we're looking at school attendance boundaries, it's important that we're creating structures for our students and we're creating pathways from elementary going into middle school all the way into high school. And our guidelines that we're proposing at this time is of course, looking at our safe and secure learning environment, good stewarders of all resources, maximizing the use of all of our existing facilities, offering students the best education in our 21st century learning spaces, and vertically aligning our students throughout our feeder pattern systems. Our school boundaries and our change process, if you notice, includes many stakeholders, of course, our Board of Trustees, our district administration, our School Attendance Boundary Oversight Committee, which we- which you all will help develop, and of course, all of our community stakeholders, our students, our faculty, staff, and our teachers. With that, district administration will consistently share with you data that we have in front of us, for example, enrollment trends, demographic studies, reside versus attendance, or reside versus attend data that we have. All of those resources will be created and they will be used to create these boundary recommendations. That information will be shared with our School Attendance Boundary Oversight Committee, and they'll ensure that all of our processes are being followed, especially our local policies that we have in place. They will provide us that guidance, which we will bring to you as Board of Trustees, so that you could provide us feedback, and then at that point, we take that information to our stake- stakeholders will provide us feedback and input, will go and modify, and again, the process begins. So it's so important that, as you see, we are a team to ensure that we're providing the best for our children. If you notice, the whole child is within this diagram because students always come first. So our discipline principles, if you go back to the previous slide, as we went through all of the stakeholders that have a key aspect when it comes to boundary changes, if you notice all the little squigglies, what that is, is our boundary decision principles. Right now, the principles that we are recommending is always looking at our enrollment projections. We want to look at reside versus attend, and we want to ensure that we have a consistent and up-to-date demographic study. That way, as we're looking, we're always looking 10 years before, what is it that our trends are doing? And with a demographic study, we're able to project out five to 10 years in the future what our enrollment and demographic look like for each one of our systems, each one of our feeder patterns within our district. The other thing that it's important to see is our enrollment management plan. With our GIS, which is Geographic Information System and Mapping, we're able to see our new students that are coming in, if there are any new single-family homes within our areas. I believe there's a new area in our northeast. We're also looking at new multifamily homes that are coming in. We're also looking at our established communities. What are our birth rates? What are the transition as far as for that enrollment management? Not just the birth rates, we're also looking at our pre-K3 students that are in the community, that are not within our schools, but live within our community that we want to bring them in, pre-K4 students. So all that information is important for us to review with you all on a yearly basis. Utilization projections and school capacities. As we're looking at all of this information, it's important to know each and every one of our campuses and what their capacities are, what their projections, to ensure we're maximizing the use of every single facility that we have within EPISD. Community integrity, as we're looking at these boundaries moving forward, we're always looking at keeping our students together within their cohorts if they choose. We're looking at campus feeder pattern systems, we're looking at community collaboration films, to ensure that every child within our community has access to those same programs. We're looking at transportation and road networks. As we're doing boundaries, we want to ensure that we look at the Thor Fairs, the canals, we look at different structures to ensure that we're keeping that area, the students together, and geographical proximity within their schools. The other thing that we do is, once we have all that data, we want to ensure that if there's different options, that we're minimizing changes for our family. So that's something that we always want to keep in mind. And of course, input from all of our stakeholders is very important. So as we're going through this boundary process, as you noticed and I shared before, it's about creating recommendations, going back out to the community, sharing, getting their feedback, going back to our collaboration school that we have, our School Attendance Boundary Oversight Committee, and then bringing those proposals right back for you all for feedback, and we go back to the planning place before we bring them to you all for final approval. And the last thing that I have on this slide is I want to ensure that all of this, it's important that it is written down. Right now, our FC Local has two sentences on there. We want to ensure that it's rich with all of your guidelines to where those systems are in place and are very transparent. That's something that we learn consistently from you all and from Ms. Sayah Vedra, that we want to make sure that we create transparent and documented systems as we move forward. Our School Attendance Boundary Development and Approval Process. These are some of the things that I verbally shared, but I wanted to visually share with our stakeholders. Of course, our approval process, always our board is at the top. You will review, input, and provide us, of course, our final approval. And that's for our Attendance Boundary Process, to ensure that we have it documented, and as we mentioned, Policy FC. That's something that we are recommending to revise and bring to you all in a future date. Administration, we will work diligently to develop, facilitate, propose, and implement our recommendations, our annual review process, a demographic report, that's very important that we bring your way, and of course, the proposals that we will be bringing to you all for revision, review, and then finally for approval. Our School Attendance Boundary Oversight Committee. Once that is established, they're going to be tasked to ensure that they analyze, verify, modify, and accept. But not just that, they want to make sure that we're going to be adhering to all of the guidelines that we have in place, and of course, they will be the ones receiving a lot of that feedback from the community, from us, so that they're able to provide us the guidance as we adjust and make modifications to the initial recommendation. And of course, all of our stakeholders are important. So there will be public hearings, community meetings, and all of those will be published and publicized so that we have as much feedback as we can. Of course, there'll be face-to-face meetings that we have. Now, with the advent of technology, we also will have virtual meetings to ensure that everybody has the opportunity to give us their feedback and their input. This is our proposed Attendance Boundary Timeline. Of course, I'm here in front of you today to share with you our draft process. In January, based on the feedback that you provide me, I will bring back our proposed, and at that point, it'll be documented process to ensure that we have everything in place. We will also bring back FC Local for your approval. In February, our Annual Enrollment Review, that's something that we want to start as of this year. Every year, you will receive an annual enrollment review so that you all see what we're doing, how we're trending, and of course, our demographic study, that's very important to share with our board and our community. From March through August, at that point, we will establish our School Attendance Boundary Oversight Committee, and with them, we will start sharing with them the data that we have in front of us and the resources. With that, they will help us present our first recommendation to the board, and that recommendation will come to you all August, September, so that we could start getting feedback from you all. From that recommendation- From that recommendation, we'll start taking that out to stakeholders September through October of 2023. Based on feedback that they have, we'll go right back to the school attendance boundary oversight committee to make any revisions that might be necessary, and we'll come right back to the board in November, November, December, for your final approval based on the feedback that we receive from our community. And of course, any approved boundary recommendations that you all make or the approved ones, those would be implemented for the 24, 25 school year. What that does is it gives administration the spring semester to communicate everything out to the families to ensure all of our processes are in place as we register and as we start our next school. Our school attendance boundary action plan. In summary, decision principles are very important. FC local will be updated and available for your approval. Data, demographic study, facilities master plan, a tie plan transformation innovation equity plan will be presented to the board throughout this timeline. And then, of course, our school attendance boundary oversight committee. That's going to be important. They're going to be our balance to ensure that we are following all process. In communication, as I mentioned, transparency is very important to Ms. Sayavedra and to our board. We will ensure that this information is on our website, our campus websites. We will be sharing this with our community within different venues and opportunities. For transparency, it's important that our parents, faculty, staff, our students, they provide us that feedback during our public hearings and community meetings. And of course, everything that we do is with a rationale of the board-approved mission, vision, core beliefs, and balance. The last couple of slides, of course, that I have are mission, vision, core beliefs. Thank you so much for guiding us and having these in place. Can I please have some of your feedback at this time?
Thank you very much. Do we have any board members who want to ask questions? Mr. Call?
Thank you for that. It's nice to see a plan and a procedure so well thought out like that. And I'm also happy to see that we're going to be, we're going to be taking a look at this annually going forward because, you know, it's a shifting landscape out there. And from what I understand, it's been 10 years since we looked at this, and that's just, you know, that's not just, that's not good practice, in my opinion. I am concerned about the fact that it, you know, according to the timeline here, we're looking at a 20-month process from today until, you know, it gets implemented in the beginning of the 2023, 2024, 2025 school year. I think that that's excessive. I'm looking at the Oversight Committee, given five months to do their job, I think that that's excessive as well. Going, you know, the most recent experience that we've had of something of this nature was when we redid the voting boundaries. And I think the committee that we put together did their work within about a month and a half, two months. So I personally, I know I'm just one trustee and you're looking for input here. My input is, I'd like to see this process move a lot faster and be implemented at the beginning of the next school year.
Yes, sir. And if I could provide you feedback, I think it's just the timing of it. Truly, whenever you do a boundary process, you want to approve it November, December. The reason that approval in November, December is very important is that gives that spring semester opportunity for administration and not just that, for our families to understand the transition that will start occurring for that next school year. The fact that we're here in November, December, or actually December, January, creating the process, that, in my opinion, is what makes it that longer process. It's just part of the timeline. The other biggest piece of it is that demographic study. We have to go out for a demographer, so that will probably come to you all, let me say, about February, March, probably March. And then that demographer needs time to create that five to 10 years back, five to 10 years in the future, that is so important for you all. We have enrollment information, but that demographer is very important because that's where we get our single-family, multifamily, attend versus reside. We have a little bit of that information, but not all. So those are the key factors of why it moves it forward. If we had that information, sir, I think we could move it like you're saying, but without that key factor, that's something that's very important. The other piece of it is, we are in the process of getting information for our strategic planning. And with that, as I mentioned, within those months, it's not just creating the committee, it's also getting the facilities master plan to share that with you all. And I know that's something that the board is very interested in. That information is key to developing our boundaries. It's not in isolation. Whenever you do boundaries, you want to include all of the data so that you're making informed decisions. Now, next year, this information, I know that in February, we're going to share with you that enrollment process. For next year, that'll be much sooner. That'll probably be in August that we already start giving the enrollment process for the future years. Just know that the timeline is just based on where we are today.
I would also add, Mr. Call, that right now, we are minus one board member, and so elections will occur in May. And it may be important for the board to consider having all districts represented prior to making any decisions about specific boundaries. That's another factor that we took into account as we created this particular timeline. Again, it's December. The runway is significantly short for us to make any boundary recommendations or changes for families for the 23, 24 school year. The earliest we could initiate a shift might be the 24, 25 school year. But we're open to feedback and other factors that we should consider that we haven't already, you know, thought of.
Dr. Seveta?
So I appreciate how detailed you went into this and kind of got into the specifics on what you're doing. I think this is something that we've never really seen happen in the district, and the boundaries are really complex. And so I appreciate that. I was worried as well when I looked at this item, shared a lot of what trustee Call said, mainly because we had said in May that we were going to have the trustee maps done, and then after that, we were going to start on this process, and nothing really happened at that point. So I get the explanation now. I just wish that we would have gotten on this seven months ago and not now, because then if we would have done that, then we would have maybe done everything and we'd be here approving for the next school year. But if we have to do it for a better plan and take some time and we're going to have something in place, then I'm okay with that at this point.
Well, I certainly appreciate that feedback, and I know that the board took final action on the redistricting in September. We've had a number of different new members to our team, onboarding of leadership, reorganization of work as we brought in new leaders. And so all of those things impact how quickly we can move as an organization. So yes, I know that the board's intent was for us to begin immediately. However, again, we're creating the conditions and the systems in the organization so that we can do complex work like this in a meaningful way, honor the board's desire, and also, you know, honor the community and the families to make sure that we do this well with a high level of transparency and intent.
Is Mr. Iribali?
And then I'll go to you, Ms. Hernandez. First, thank you, Ms. Masias. I think it's quite a comprehensive look. I actually am on the other side of this. I think, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, if we do this process correctly the first year, comprehensively make sure all our data is queued up nicely, that means that any review subsequently and following years will be easier, correct? Just because we have the correct data, information before us. So we'll be modifying as we, year to year, it versus rebuilding and retooling?
That is exactly right. Every year moving forward, November, December is when we will be bringing proposals to you all if boundary recommendations are required for that subsequent year. Yes, sir.
So from my perspective, I would like to take the time on the front end to make sure the process on the back end is done well, especially as we look towards developments. We see what the PSB is doing with that $59 a month, how that's going to impact us. So seeing this year to year is going to drastically affect how we look at the boundary lines, especially as we look towards District 5 and District 4. I'm going to be moving more and more north year after year with the development happening as it is, which means trustee Hernandez is going to be moving further north as well, capturing some of those border precincts. So I know redistricting doesn't happen. Ms. Collins, I can see your face. I know that redistricting is separate on this one. But as we look towards boundaries, it's going to be really pivotal for folks to understand. Yes, you may be trustee in trustee Iribali's District 5, but you'll actually be attending the school and vice versa. So I guess if we can do a balance between what trustee Call and Dr. Seveta are asking of finding a way to get that data and that information right, but I'd rather do it right than quick. So if there's a way, great. If not, I would err on the side of caution here personally.
And basically, that was what I was wanting. The first thing that came to mind was if we're going to do this every year, knowing that the development in District 5 was going to change the process, do we change every year? But you've now, I think, I have a clear understanding how it's done. But that was the first thing that came to my mind, that it's going to change.
Well, and there would be, you know, as we bring this to you, this would launch the process of us sharing our annual enrollment review with you. It would also launch us reviewing the facilities master plan and the progress that we're making on that plan and any, you know, future decisions or adjustments to the plan that we need to consider. Again, I would reiterate some of what Mr. Iribali said in terms of, we're going to do, you know, a system launch at this point, will address, you know, any issues, and we will bring the board any changes to any original recommendations from the previous year. But once we lay out the initial boundary kind of decisions, and we may take it in phases, it could be that certain areas of the district are more critical for us to address before we start, you know, messing with any others. And so typically, this is done in phases, which is why we bring it back every year, but we can give you an outlook of when we would consider boundaries in any given area as we work with the demographer and, you know, again, build the process and provide you with recommendations.
Ms. Nanny, do you have anything you'd like to add? Thank you. I'll end the discussion, just I'm in agreement with what I'm seeing here. It looks like a very well-prepared plan of action to move forward with this process. To my fellow board members, there's so much that's involved when it comes to boundaries. We have to consider not only high schools, I mean, that's where, when I get the information from those that are saying it's high schools, but it's middle schools, it's elementary schools, and how do you align them all? I can tell you that today, there are some schools out there that, you know, the middle school, you have some kids from that middle school departing to one high school, and other kids departing to another high school. They're not staying together, and, you know, those elements are very important. The populations and those projections are extremely important. So I just, I think being patient is absolutely important in this process. The timelines are good, but EPISD is like a huge ship. You know, when it's out there cruising on the water, you can turn that rudder as hard as you want, but it's going to take time for it to turn. And that applies here, too. It's just going to take some time to make sure that the plan is done well effectively so that we're not having to come back in the future to correct mistakes. So thank you for the presentation, Ms. Sayavedra. Thank you for the work that you're doing on this. This is just a report, there is no action, correct?
No.
Okay, so unless there's any other discussion by anybody, thank you.
I just have one last thing, sorry. I just, as we're going into this, one thing that came up a few months ago while I was visiting Navarrete was that there are students that are 1.9 miles away from school, and they're not in qualifying for a bus pickup. So if we could think about that by .1 miles, right? Because it's a two-mile thing. So as we're doing this, if we could integrate that thought to make sure that we're not leaving kids behind by .1 mile or .2 miles.
That's definitely something that will be in place. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we will move on to the next report. It's item 6B, the Quarterly Update on School Facility Planning and Construction, 2016 Bond Program. Ms. Seveta?
Yes, thank you, trustee Velarde, or Board President Velarde and trustees. Mr. Alan Warnicki and Irene will be sharing with you updates on some of the final projects associated with the 2016 bond.
Good evening, Board President Velarde, members of the board. Ms. Sayavedra, happy holidays. My name is Alan Warnicki, Chief Operations Officer for the district. I'll be providing the quarterly update on the 2016 bond program. And as it's the last month of the calendar year, I want to start off by showing some highlights over the year in review. I'll then stick to some of the standard things that we cover in the quarterly updates, the budget, the schedule, and a detailed overview of where we are in each project. And then, as Rene Jimenez from M&amp;K mentioned, there was a significant amount of community input in the school project committees, working with each architect to ensure that the buildings that we designed were what the community needed and wanted. So I want to finish each project overview with a reflection of what the artistic rendering looked like compared to what was actually delivered. So some program highlights, there are six projects out of our 17 major construction projects highlighted on the screen here. Five of them will be presented for either partial or final payment later on in the agenda for tonight's board meeting. Andrus High School was approved at last month's board meeting for partial payment. And if you look at all of these projects that are listed on here, there's a significant amount of project contingency savings that will be returned so we can do more work for our schools. I'll cover these in greater detail as we move on. So looking at the schedule, again, Andrus was approved in November. Tonight, we'll talk about Duran, El Paso High School, Irvin, Haskins, and MacArthur. And then the next quarter, we'll be bringing to the board for final payment and acceptance of work, Austin, Tina Harrow, Murfree Navarrete, Jefferson, and finally, Bobby Joe Hill. All of the projects that you see listed in blue are either completed or substantially complete and in the project closeout phase. And again, we'll have a number of other schools in substantial completion as we round out the new year. Looking at the program status in terms of the budget, this hasn't changed significantly in terms of the overall percentages. $668 million initial budget with interest accrued, we're now operating a program of $723-plus million. Again, 95% of that is committed at this point. Just a review of the program contingency and how the slide is laid out. On the left-hand side are all the allocations to each of the individual projects that the board has approved for the last five years. In the middle column, the Jacobs team projected a certain amount to go to three schools. That money hasn't been committed yet, that's just projections based on the status of the projects. And then in the column on the right is the column that's going to get the most activity over the next three or four months, certainly after tonight's board meeting, and that's project savings. And as I go through each project, I want to just start off by saying, every project that we've completed to date and every project that we will complete as projected to have significant savings, that'll be returned to the program contingency and then presented to the board for your consideration for additional work to improve our schools. I'll go through each project now. Again, Andrus High School last month was, the board approved a partial payment in the amount of just over $748,000. We did withhold 1%, which equates to just over $261,000. This was due to a long lead time item on a suite of pretty technical audiovisual equipment for the Performing Arts Center. I think it's between 12 and 15 months backordered. It's the right thing to do to wait for the right suite of equipment that was designed for that Performing Arts Center, but we didn't want to hold all that money for all of the rest of the subcontractors when the work was already done. Potential savings- Potential savings on this, once the final work is complete, is over $1.5 million under budget. So we opened up the Performing Arts Center just about a year ago, right before the holiday season. You see one of the practice rooms on the left, the theater on the bottom left is the beautiful central courtyard and then the fieldhouse. And then here's the first rendering. The renderings are always going to be on the left and realities on the right. It turned out better than the drawings. The next item is Don Haskins Pre-K to Eight. This is one of the items on the agenda later on, and this is, will be presented for partial payment of retainage in the amount of $1.464 million. This represents 4%. We are recommending withholding 1%, which equates to just over $373,000. This is because of a pending roof warranty. There was a change in subcontractors for the roof early on in the project, and we expect to have the roof warranty finalized through binding arbitration in February. However, we're recommending payment of the 4%, which also has the consent of the surety. There's an additional piece in here, and there's a couple of other projects that I'll mention. You'll recall back in October, we presented to the board a third-party complaint for some prevailing wage concerns. We presented and the board approved our recommendation that there was no grounds to believe that those violations occurred. However, the next step is that this has to be cleared up between the contractor and each of the individual employees named in the claim. And then the event, any of those employees comes forward and moves to arbitration with the general contractor, this money, additional $30,000 that we're withholding, would cover any back payments and penalties. So again, this one will be presented later on. The next couple of pictures are just some beautiful pictures of the, I guess I'd call it the new product of the West Side. I don't know if that offends anyone, but it's just a big spectacular school. And again, the rendering comparison, lower right being the school that's there today. For El Paso High, we're very happy to present this project for final acceptance and payment tonight. This will, the final acceptance payment will be $418,159. As you know, we've been dealing with the surety for this construction company for more than a year, and the surety consents to the amount being paid. There are liquidated damages due to the delay in completion and the amount of $304,778 that will be returned to the district. A few pictures of the inside of the school. No doubt, El Paso High has always been a charm to look at, but now there's something new and modern to look at on the El Paso High School campus. And again, the rendering, what we promised the community and what we delivered. For Coach Archie Duran, the next one, this will be final acceptance of work and partial payment. The 5% retainage is $1,154,000. And based on, again, the prevailing wage claim back in October, we're withholding $47,000, which would reduce the partial payment if you approve it tonight to $1.1 million. This one, once final completion is approved, we're projecting savings on this project of more than $1 million. Archie Duran, again, three elementary schools consolidated into one. This is the type of school our students deserve. Again, the rendering in reality. Next one is Irvin High School. This one is being presented for final acceptance of work and partial payment. The, there's a 5% retainage of just over $1.8 million. This one also is named in the prevailing wage complaint, and this amount we're withholding for that prevailing wage to cover any potential costs is $79,000. The partial payment would then therefore be reduced to $1.8 million, $1,804,159. This project turned out great, and it also is projected to return more than $5 million under budget back to the program contingency. Just a beautiful, modern, new school, and it looks a lot like what they designed. Also happy to report that we're going for final acceptance of work and final payment at the General Douglas MacArthur Pre-K to Eight. The final retainage payment would be in the amount of $689,238. This will also result in $1 million in program contingency savings. And this amount, just I know you're aware from Ms. Collins, this was an amount that was agreed to in the established mediated settlement agreement. So everyone is in consent to the amount to be paid should you approve it. And here's some pictures, the exterior of the school, the new Performing Arts Center and one of the practice rooms. And the rendering. Next up is Austin High School. Austin High School achieved substantial completion back in May of this year. This project has less than, you know, about $5,000 remaining and some warranty work that has to be completed. We're projecting that this will be on the agenda for final acceptance and completion at the January board meeting to pay full retainage in the amount of $1,664,000. And we're projecting that this project will be $1.5 million under budget and, again, returned to the program contingency to do more work, either at Austin or any other school in the program. The Fine Arts Auditorium ties in beautifully to the historic school, and you can see the beautiful central courtyard that the students can now enjoy. It's hard to tell the difference between the rendering. Dr. Tina Harrow, Pre-K to Eight. This will be, as I mentioned at the outset, this will be presented in the next quarter. This one's 99% complete. We're doing final inspections before the new year on site work and the parking lot, and this one is also projected to be under budget. The rendering comparison. Charles Q. Murfree. Some of you were out at the ribbon cutting just a couple of weeks ago with Mr. Murfree and his wife and family. This one is 98% complete. We're projecting this will be brought to the board for final acceptance and payment sometime in the next quarter. And the only thing you can see in red there is we're putting some final touches on the renovation to the old Johnson administration area with a new multipurpose room and some classrooms, but it's just about done and it's also under budget. Nice picture of a little bit younger Mr. Murfree on the left and a beautiful view of the front of the school. I think the only thing different here is we traded in the sports cars for a mail van, but everything else looks pretty much accurate. Next up is our sixth school on Fort Bliss property, the Captain Gabriel Navarrete Middle School. This one is 96% complete. The last thing that we're working on is finishing up the football field, putting sod and irrigation in there, and this will be presented next quarter. I would just want to point out, this wasn't originally part of the bond project, but back in October during the intercession, we were able to go ahead and put additional graphics in there and paint the hallways to bring it to life because it was kind of white and gray. But it really looks like a beautiful school. I want to remind the board that there had previously been $4 million committed from bond interest to the school. In a previous board meeting, we recommended returning $3 million of those dollars back to the bond interest, which was approved. There's still a million in there. We're projecting that that money will go back and that this will probably be another $2 million back to the program contingency. You can see some of the new graphics that I mentioned here and some of the color on the walls now. Back when it used to be called the Northeast Middle School. Over to Jefferson. This one is 92% complete. The demolition of the old Jefferson High School is complete. We're working on renovation to the, finishing up the parking lot near the weight room and renovation to the auxiliary gym is ongoing. Softball field, turf, and track and field event areas are being done. We have had some challenges with utilities, water and electrical lines that have caused some delays on this project. I also want to point out that there's an agenda item later in the board meeting for a change order related to the auxiliary gym at Jefferson High School. So the auxiliary gym was tied to the old, the old main building, and part of the wall had to be removed and redone. And as the renovation was ongoing, it became very clear that the electrical system from 50 years ago was no longer adequate and it didn't meet City of El Paso electrical code. So the change orders for about $73,000 that we have in the project contingency budget, that's why we have project contingencies for these things. It's the right thing to do to make this a safe building, and the truth is, we won't get an inspection without it. They're not asking for any additional time, and again, this is funded through the project contingency. And you can see here some of the site work for the parking lots, which is much needed, as you know, if you've ever tried to park at Jefferson, and then the sod going in on the athletic playing fields. Again, it turned out just as we planned. Next one up is Bobby Joe Hill. Bobby Joe Hill, we'll bring this one to you in the next quarter as well. It's about 94% complete. It's pending final inspection of the Terrace Hill Middle School renovation portion. We've already met with the school and all the requisite departments to make a plan to move students and teachers from about 15 portables, the middle school kids, to the new building over the break. But we have encountered some problems with, you know, again, supply chain issues. There's two, two gas meters that Texas Gas is not sure that we'll have in time, and we can't open the school without heat. So we've set a deadline for tomorrow to make a go-no-go decision on whether or not we'll move forward with moving into the school over the break. The good thing is, this is such a minimal move. This is something that could be handled over a long weekend, such as Martin Luther King or another three-day weekend. So the main entrance to the new middle school ties in perfectly with what the work that was done when we opened the new elementary portion a year ago. And really, a total transformation of the Terrace Hills and Collins footprint. Next up is Coronado High School. We have moved with earnest into the final phase of construction. This is a significant phase. You can see the building A is the new building. The last phase of construction is tying in a brand-new building B and a beautiful central courtyard to match what the standard that we have at the other high schools. You may have heard, I know some of you have heard of a problem earlier this year with a concern about the concrete foundation. There was a new green mix of concrete that was implemented in the city of El Paso, and what happened was the, you have to have a certain amount of PSI strength to support the building. And what was happening was it was taking a significantly longer time to achieve the required strength in order to go vertical on the building. But I want to report to you that all of those issues were resolved, it just took additional time, and the building is safe and structurally sound. And the minute that we got the report from the lab that everything was good to go, the contractor started erecting steel, and you'll see some pictures here in just a minute. I mentioned several months ago, six months ago, I believe, that we had a pending change order. The contractor had submitted a change order for more than 700 days. We had negotiated that down to 240. And then we thought that we had an agreement that we could bring to the board, and shortly after that, they asked for additional general conditions in excess of $700,000, and we couldn't agree to it. So the, as per the contract, the contractor has demanded mediation, and I believe you were advised on that earlier tonight. So we'll head forward with mediation. Nevertheless, the construction work is continuing. I want to point out that this is, should be obvious, given where we are on this, on this project, but the current contractual substantial completion date is in March of next year. That is not going to happen. Our best estimate is that it's achievable to get this building completed by one year from now, by next December. That, in my estimation, would be the earliest. You can see the new building B going up as long as some rock walls around the new building. And the only other thing I'd like to add on Coronado is the old Fine Arts Building and Building D and E. We got a lot of complaints from the community that it didn't match in well with the color and design scheme of the new building. It used to be red versus the blue scheme, so our maintenance department went out in the last quarter and painted everything except for the Fine Arts Building itself to match this, and the community is very pleased with that work. The final project that's pending in our program that I want to cover tonight is 80% complete. This is the Hartley Pre-K to Eight Ross and Huey. The Ross middle school student started the school year in the new middle school building that's part of Hartley, and the Huey kids started school in the old Ross building so we can do the renovation to Huey, and that's what's happening right now. It's, the work is scheduled to be complete this summer, so it will become the Hartley Pre-K to Eight for the start of the next school year. And once we move the elementary kids into the new renovated Huey building, we'll be able to demolish Ross, build the football field and the additional playing fields. This one, again, is projected to be under budget, but this one will take some time just because of all the shell games that we have to go through. You can see some of the work happening on the renovation to Huey. And the rendering comparison. And then, these projects are complete, but I just want to go over them quickly. Dr. Joseph Torres was completed back in 2020, $516,000 under budget. Rendering comparison. And then Burgess High School was completed in 2021 at a savings of $982,000 to the budget. Beautiful school on Edgemere. I'd like to just close by saying that it's December 2022. The voters in our community approved the bond measure back in November of 2016. So we're at six years, six years and one month from the time the voters approved this bond. And in that time, we've purchased 80 new clean-fuel propane-burning school buses, the most modern fleet in the city. We've instituted one-to-one instructional technology for all grade levels in our school district. We've provided funding for the region's most safe and secure schools in terms of access control and perimeter fencing. And we've built a heavy investment on athletic facilities with 10 new tennis courts that are lighted for nighttime play, not only for our students, but for the communities in which our high schools sit. And the same thing goes for the track and field complexes with the athletic, the synthetic turf. And on top of that, as I mentioned, 13 to 17 projects and soon to be 15 to 17 are substantially complete. So we're at six years, we're at 95% complete in the bond program. And the last thing I want to point out is that most of this construction occurred over the last two and a half years, which, as you know, was plagued by a global pandemic that significantly impacted the skilled labor market here in El Paso. It also affected supply chains with material delays every single week, it seems, in our program, and with recent inflation, has impacted the cost of every facet of our bond program. Nevertheless, we're at 95%, and every project is significantly under budget. If you add up everything that I told you about being under budget, we're projecting in excess of $15 million under budget for this program to be brought back to the board to be spent to reinvest in our schools and our students. And finally, I just want to say thank you to my team from EPISD Facilities and Construction, and this is the Jacobs last meeting. I want to thank them for their partnership over the last decade, really, for their hard work in making these schools come to reality. And thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Warnicki. Do we have any questions from the board, Dr. Osavera?
For Austin, you mentioned the courtyard, and students can enjoy it. One thing that hasn't happened is the screen that was supposed to be there. So I wanted to get an update on that.
Sure.
So I know that Mr. Vedderusko was also involved in that as well?
Yes. So, yeah, we talked, the screen in the courtyard, and if you look at the bottom picture, if you were sitting on those little green steps and facing kind of toward the bottom of the screen, that's where the screen's supposed to go on the wall. This is part of the scope of the bond. We asked the contractor and the architect to design a few options for us, and the options that they presented to us, frankly, it was excessive in cost. So back in, and it was very difficult because it's not a flat wall. You would actually have to build a structure to be able to put the screen onto the wall, and it was, it was too costly, and we didn't want the contractor to delay any more in closing out the school. So what we did back, we made a decision, I think, on August 17th of this year in a bond meeting with our IT team. And what we did is we removed the screen from the scope of the project for the general contractor, and we gave the money to IT to come up with a solution. And I know that they've been working on at least two different options to be able to do this, so they're much do this, so they're a much more flexible option, and also a much reduced cost to the district. But it'll give the school what they need.
And what was the too-expensive option? What was, that looked like?
I don't, it was in excess of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to put a digital screen on the building, and with most of the cost actually going to the construction to support the screen.
And how much is left? I think you said one point five million, is that correct?
On Austin?
Yeah.
Maybe, yeah.
And so, there's that money left. Why couldn't we use that to build a nice screen that was promised, and this community has just been waiting for that? So, it's disappointing, and I guess my question now is also, how much was Mr. Vederusco's team given as opposed to what the hundred and fifty thousand was, especially when there's ten times more money's left over?
Given the amount of project contingency that's remaining in there, whatever option that they come up with, we'll allocate that money to IT so the job can be done right.
Yeah, I would hope so. Miss Ayveda, I'll want to follow up with you on this. I know we've been talking about this for a while, so I want to make sure that the Austin community is given what they were promised and not short-selled on it.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Are there any other comments or discussions? I see no red lights. Mr. Warnock, thank you so much for the great presentation. Okay, so we are now going to go to action items. Item seven A, discuss and take appropriate action on adoption of the district's strategic blueprint to include strategic levers and essential actions. And so, Ms. Ayveda, I'll go ahead and hand it to you.
Thank you, President Velarde and trustees. You know, I will be celebrating my one-year anniversary in January. The year has gone by quite quickly, and I just want to take a moment to take us back a year ago. A big part of my entry into the school district was to listen, learn, and lead, and we spent a lot of time over the course of the spring semester, really engaging with the community to get information about what the future in El Paso ISD, what the future might look like for our students. As I worked through the entry plan, if you recall, I shared with each of you that I had two primary goals as I come to the close of my first year. The first was to work very closely with the board to cultivate a team of eight, and we've been working to that end over the course of the year. In addition to that, we, I discussed that my second primary goal was really to make sure that we developed a strategic framework and we charted the future for the school district. And a last board meeting, you all approved the mission, the vision, and the core beliefs that really ground Phase Two of the plan that we're presenting to you today. As I said in the spring, we worked and engaged with the community. I brought back that information with you over a series of training sessions, beginning in February, all the way through December. We have been working on creating and charting the vision for the future. We engaged in Hopes and Dreams two-point-oh earlier this fall, at which time we had close to two thousand five hundred and fifty-two participants when we think about our hopes and dreams in the spring and then our hopes and dreams in the fall. So, we had quite a bit of community engagement associated with that. As we looked to, we asked them in Hopes and Dreams two-point-oh, we asked them two questions when we went back to the community after the work that I did with the board, and those two questions were, what is missing that should be added and/or should anything be deleted to the documents that we presented to them based on their initial feedback? And also, what do you want to see to show the plan is working? And so, the community provided significant feedback, and they also validated that we had taken the information that they had shared with us in the spring, and we, the documents that we presented really reflected what, how they wanted to see the future unfold in El Paso ISD. Some of the themes in terms of ways that we can show the community that the plan is working are, you know, more motivated teachers, a higher level of accountability, higher graduation rates. They gave us several suggestions for each individual section of the document that we should consider as we think about reporting out to the community once the board adopts the plan. So, what I'm here to present to you, and you're very familiar with the documents for your consideration, are what we're calling our Hopes and Dreams Realized 2022 to 2025, our El Paso ISD Strategic Blueprint. I want to thank the board for all of the work, the hours that you spent, really kind of cultivating and helping us really vision for the future. I want to also thank the administrative team and the staff who really took the feedback that you provided us and really formulated a big part of the document. So, Mari Vel, if you could fast-forward. As I said, we passed the, you all approved the mission, the vision, and the core beliefs and commitments in the previous meeting. Tonight's meeting, I bring to you what we are calling the Strategic Levers, which are really broad-based, you know, thematic work to support the district in achieving its core beliefs and commitments, along with the mission and the vision, accompanied by essential actions, which are specific focus areas that are really get us from point A to point B. So, in total, the work of the community, the work of the board, and the work of the administration, we've landed on five strategic levers. The first being a focus on whole-child development. Our statement reads, "El Paso ISD schools foster learning environments for the whole child to thrive." That was a very important piece for the board and for the community that came out in all of the feedback that they presented to us. The second lever is academic excellence. "El Paso ISD empowers all learners to excel in current and future pursuits." Lever three, destination district. "El Paso ISD solidifies its position as El Paso's destination district." Lever four, a culture of accountability. "El Paso ISD cultivates a culture of transparency, care, and service." And then equity by design, which is our fifth lever, strategic lever. "El Paso ISD champions a targeted approach to universal access and system equity." Each one of these levers has essential actions tied to each one for whole child. We have five essential actions. They have to do with creating healthy classroom cultures, using our community schools model to continue to expand wraparound services to other feeder patterns, building a mindset of healthy habits to strengthen students' social and emotional academic competence, engaging in practices that develop students' ability to manage their behavior so that we can, you know, strengthen the safety and security of our schools, not only mental, but physical safety for our students. And then the fifth essential action, which is really providing our students with challenging coursework and through multiple pathways for them to, you know, become the best versions of themselves through advanced placement, IB, dual enrollment programs to all interested students. Our second lever, as I said, academic excellence, comes with three essential actions. Really, the first focus is to develop and implement a guaranteed and viable curriculum so that we can guarantee that our students are all learning what the state requires. Lever two, increase student achievement outcomes, really addressing performance gaps in literacy and in STEM, and then increasing our graduation rates so that all of our students are prepared for college and have viable post-secondary options. Destination district comes with four essential actions, to develop and implement a detailed strategic facilities master plan for modernizing schools and rightsizing the school district. Second, to attract, retain, and grow top talent to equip and empower our students to thrive, effectively market and communicate information to the district's public about the school district, and then expand and integrate 21st century learning and innovation skills. Essential, or lever four, which has to do with a culture of accountability, has three essential actions associated with it, and that's really a focus on welcoming, fostering a welcoming and safe environment where students and families feel supported, along with the community, effective two-way communication with family, students, and community, and continue to be an accountable entity that's fiscally responsible, efficient in its use of resources, and really works towards transparency with public-facing, you know, information. And then, finally, lever five, again, which is focused on equity by design, comes with two essential actions, and that is to foster equitable access to opportunities by eliminating barriers for all students and to provide high-quality, relevant, differentiated resources matched to each school's needs and strengths. So, at this time, you know, I will take any questions from the board and would like the board to consider adopting our final phase of our directional documents and our strategic blueprint to chart the future for El Paso ISD.
Okay. Are there any questions from any board members regarding item seven A? I know we spent a lot of time working on it, so.
Yeah, I have some questions. I think there was a little bit of some confusion when we did the strategic planning process on what the deliverables were going to be for the board. My understanding at the beginning of the process was that we were going to have key performance indicators for this strategic plan, and that some of those would be pulled from the strategic plan and put on the superintendent evaluation. I know it was, you know, an interesting process, but at some point, we sort of turned and we pivoted and then just focused on the superintendent evaluation. So, my question is, especially as we're going into our budget planning season, when can we expect that deliverable? How will we be involved in the process? When are we going to make up for the gap that we missed by pivoting?
Well, I'm not sure that I would characterize it as a gap and a pivot. I would say that typically, when the board's role is to set the strategic framework and direction for the school district, we went through the process of looking at essential targets so that we could determine the things that the board would hold me as a superintendent accountable for, also while we were developing the superintendent's evaluation. So, the data that we track, we'll develop a cycle to report out to the board on a number of different data points that show the board, the progress that we're making, along with data points that align to what you see in the superintendent's evaluation in the next item that you are going to be discussing. I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Macias because she's developing the timeline for us to provide you with the comprehensive deliverable, but at this point, the board needs to approve the strategic levers and the essential actions for the district, for the administration to do its work.
And if I could ask a clarifying question before you get started, Ms. Macias? The very first meeting, we were told our board goals should be our district goals, and I guess that's what I'm referring to, is we had an understanding that the board goals that we were going to develop were going to be the district's goals, and that was the process that we were undertaking, and sort of, you know, separate and apart from that was going to be, some of those things were going to be pulled into the superintendent evaluation. Am I mischaracterizing that part of it? So, I guess my question is, and I'm really, for this for me is board accountability and how we hold ourselves accountable. When are we going to finish the process of finalizing what our board goals are? That's my question.
Are you talking about the House Bill Three goals?
No. No, the process, when we started the process at the very beginning, we had a conversation about our board goals and our district goals being the same. And so, we were sort of told, you know, the things that we're going over, you have your board goals, you're going to get, have reports on those. Some of those things, and I think Dr. Ino-Hosak sort of mentioned that two components were pulled from those things for Dallas and into the superintendent evaluation. Some of those things would be pulled toward the superintendent evaluation, but I guess, is this the extent of the board goal planning that we're doing, or did we pivot to just this being our board goals? That's what I'm asking for clarity on.
Correct. And I think what you're asking is, you also saw many other metrics. I believe you saw seventy-seven other metrics. Those are still in place, Ms. Ayveda had mentioned. You all identified the ones that you wanted in your superintendent evaluation, which I have to share with you. However, all of the other ones are still in place. So, as, and I'll share this timeline with you, as we provide formative reviews for you all to see, all of those other metrics are also going to be provided to you. So, those other metrics are within the levers and are within the essential actions, so they have not gone away. Whenever this blueprint is published, it'll all be published all in one and all together. Yes?
I guess I want to clarify for Ms. Hanani. Our strategic levers are the strategic framework and the board goals, i.e., our district goals. We've chosen to use the term strategic levers. It aligns with a lot of the TEA language and the effective schools framework, but those are the broad-based goals that we're drawing from. Your essential actions, our objectives, translate to objectives that are tied to each one of those goals. And so, our district improvement plan, you all adopted performance objectives that align to the district improvement plan, which is a one-year plan, which is very compliance-based. This is our strategic framework, and the, you know, this will set and chart the course for the work of the district from 2022 to 2025.
So, there's a disconnect between what I'm hearing from you and what I'm hearing here because I can see where you said we had some other things that we were going to adopt as goals. And for me, this is about the differentiation for the community, what we're adopting as board goals versus what's on the superintendent evaluation, and what we were told we would be adopting as board goals were measurable goals. The essential actions are not measurable goals. They're broad-based goals, as you mentioned, but they're not measurable goals. What measurable goals will this board be adopting as our board goals? Because I don't believe that we wanted House Bill Three goals to be our board goals.
Well, if these are not the goals and the intent of the board's work going forward, then we'll need to go back to the drawing board. Our last meeting in December, this, it was explained to the board that these would be brought for the board's adoption to set our strategic framework and the broad-based work that we would be doing as a school district. Our district strategic levers translate into what our board goals are, and our essential actions are the specific objectives that we're working towards. We have key targets that we will use to track the progress that we're making and develop a cycle to report out to the board. If there's, if that's not the intent of the board, then that, I need to hear that feedback as a superintendent to go forward.
And the strategic framework is? The strategic framework for me, I mean, that's one component of it. That's the strategic framework that the board is going to use to, as you mentioned, create a strategic plan. I'm specifically referring to our board goals that we're adopting as a board to hold ourselves accountable for what we want the district to measure. I think that where we started, and you sort of mentioned it, that we had talked about having more key performance indicators we would pull from the superintendent evaluation. Are we planning on adopting these as our board goals? I need more clarity on what we're adopting as measurable goals, board goals, and I don't know. Maybe I'm the only one that understood it that way.
And Ms. Hanani, my previous response, I misunderstood. I thought you were asking for more of the strategic actions or the actual targets that you were not seeing here. So, going back to what Ms. Ayveda said, our strategic plan with the levers, these are those key measurables or those key goals that we're looking at moving forward with.
You are adopting the five strategic levers and all of the essential actions that go along with that?
Does anybody else want to comment at this point? Okay, does anybody else want to comment at this point? Mr. Call, do you have something?
I guess now I'm a little confused. So these are the strategic levers and the strategic plan, but then I'm wondering, are these the district goals then? Because I remember the conversation that we had was, you can't have board goals and district goals, it should just be district goals. So I'm just trying to get that clarity. Is, are these the district?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And so district goals equal board goals, this is what we're adopting today?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So on lever three, there's essential action number one, talks about rightsizing the district. And my understanding, obviously, we've had contentious debate over this, but I was reading the El Paso Matters story that was published today, and Mr. Reladler was quoted saying, like, it's not specific to school closures, but includes a lot of leveling on enrollment. And it got me thinking, like, can we just define what you mean by rightsizing in it?
Yes. And for rightsizing, truly, it goes right with that boundary plan, which is whenever we have, we look at each one of our facilities. If any of our facilities is overcapacity, then what we do is we look at attendance boundaries so that we can maximize the use of that facility. If we have a new program that is going into one of our facilities, we want to make sure that we rightsize and that we have enough, or, you know, our students provided the opportunity to go to that, go to that. The other thing that we do for rightsizing is the possibility of consolidating. I know that you all have gone through consolidations within the past five to seven years, and we do look at consolidation, where you have two schools that come together, you have a new school that comes up, what that consolidation looks like. Within the consolidation, there might be closures in doing that. So all of that is part of rightsizing, ensuring that we are providing the best opportunities for our children, you know, when they're with us from elementary all the way through high school.
So if I'm defining rightsizing, you're saying school boundaries and school closures slash consolidations? That's what rightsizing means?
No, sir. I would say that, you know, when you think about rightsizing, there's a number of different things that you have to consider. You need to look at, first of all, you need to develop a facilities master plan that has a 10-year outlook and an annual enrollment review. You have to assess boundaries and look at a potential student, new student enrollment. You mentioned that in your bounty presentation, Maribel, about potential students versus actual students that attend our schools. In addition to that, you look at, as you're considering program expansion, you look at where are the potential areas in the school district where we can expand programming or where there's a need? I'll use pre-K three and four as an example. We would look at enrollment in certain areas of the district and where would we target expansion of those programs to, you know, stabilize our enrollment and draw additional enrollment to the school district. So all of those things are, would be strategies that we would incorporate in terms of rightsizing the district. You would use a facilities assessment to respond in a facilities master plan, what we would be proposing, and you would use all of that information to create a bond plan that we would then deliver to the voters for them to make a determination about whether they're going to support, you know, that work. So all of those things together, I wouldn't say that either, any single one of those strategies could be characterized as rightsizing as a standalone. I think that you have to incorporate all of those pieces in order to truly modernize and rightsize the district. That also includes strategic budget investments to make sure that as we're expanding programs, as we're looking at boundaries, as we're trying to draw additional enrollment, that we've got the resources to allocate so that we can deliver high-quality instruction with any expansion or consolidation that we might bring to the board for its consideration.
Okay, so we don't have a facilities master plan?
No, not yet.
And we have a boundaries plan that was presented that was very thorough, that's going to take 18-plus months to implement, correct? Do we have a program expansion plan?
And that's something that will be shared with you all? And we're calling the Transformation, Innovation, and Equity Plan. Yes, sir. That's something that will be developed, and part of that process, it will be presented to you all, and that'll be able to provide or share the programs that are available for all of our students, and of course, for your review and approval.
But how long will that take?
That, we have it in the timeline. I believe it was from March all the way through August. You'll start receiving some of those deliverables during that time.
And then to draw additional enrollment, do we have a plan?
That is what we have, and we will definitely share that with you. Right now, we're looking at our pre-K programs, we're looking at when we're actually going to start opening up enrollment and all of those, yes. So that's something that is being developed and will consistently be shared with you all.
And I would share with you that deliverables for these are scheduled in the timeframe of March because our budget launch for the 23-24 school year begins in March. And so as we're sharing proposals for expansion, it aligns with the work that we'll do to plan our budget to support any expansion. And some of those expansions will be shared with the board in phases. So really, the facilities master plan and all of the components that become part of that really begin to shape the process that we'll use as a school district to bring ongoing recommendations to the board over the course of the next three years.
And I guess the, and we have a closure plan, consolidation plan?
That would be included in that, in that, because we don't currently have one. I know that there were pieces of a plan that were incorporated in, when the rollout of the 2016 bond, but there are pieces of a closure plan that are missing, you know, in terms of really creating that comprehensive plan with timelines for community engagement. In other words, if you were considering a closure in a particular school year, what would that backdated timeline need to include in terms of effective community engagement before proposals and recommendations were made to the board to consider?
And the last question I have is, Dr. Inohosa said that he didn't really believe in five-year plans when we're doing a strategic plan. We've got to look at something smaller. So just to get that understanding that I had from all the sessions that we had, this is over the next course of 18 months?
I would say that the plan is built for three years, but we would do it in sprints of 18 months as, because, I mean, I know that there's long-range planning, and every 18 months, we might, or every, you know, annually and up to 18 months, the board would have any opportunity to revise and adjust and, you know, determine, is this the direction that we continue to want to go?
Okay.
I have one more comment.
Okay, let me allow other board members, please, first. Mr. Ball.
Ms. Macias, I just want to clarify, I heard it, but I didn't catch it. You said that the facilities master plan would include an equity study in it as well? Is that what you said? Or I heard equity study.
Right, that's the Transformation, Innovation, and Equity Plan. That's something that is in place. The equity study, that is something that we are going to go out for RFP, and once we dive into that and receive it, that will be part of that Transformation, Innovation, and Equity Plan. Yes, sir.
And that will be rolled into our closure consolidation plan, our outreach plan, all those other components as well, is that correct?
Yes, and I'm also glad that you're articulating this, just like Dr. Asaveta. All of those pieces have to be in place for us to move forward, especially as we're doing this sprint here. All of those key elements will help us as we're moving forward every year and just revising as we go, just like Ms. Ayvedra said. Yes, it's that 18-month sprint, but then every, once we develop this blueprint, every time that we come in yearly, then we're just looking at it, revising and updating based on that solidified plan that you all mentioned. And all of those are key components to it.
So, and just, because this is the way my mind works, so all these components will basically be playing a large role in developing a strategic plan for rightsizing, whether that's through any of the avenues that you described in programming, consolidation, closures, any of those things that we discussed tonight, that would all be rolled in with the equity plan, the facilities assessment, the demographic study, the school boundary outlook, the recommended programs, and any other rightsizing efforts, is that correct?
Yes, and they're all tied together, sir.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I do have a follow-up on the board goal, and maybe, Mr. Ball, this is for you, but, I mean, if we don't have board goals that this board is adopting, then we need to decide if we're going to be monitoring the board goals that are already in place for HB3. I thought, based on the board's discussion in these past sessions, that the board wasn't happy with the goals that were currently adopted under HB3. It's not like we're monitoring them or assessing them and on a calendar of assessment. So I would ask that we revisit that subject as a board, because our governance work is really based on the goals that we set for ourselves and how we hold ourselves accountable as a board to the public. You know, if we're going to keep HB3 goals, fine, that's a conversation we're going to have, but that's not the conversation that we've had to the public. I think the conversation that we've had to the public is that we are going to have specific and measurable outcomes-based governance goals that we would be adopting so that we could track our progress as a board, and I just don't see that here. So maybe that's something that we should revisit as a board.
I would recommend that we revisit because I know that we went through a number of different sessions to develop the strategic framework that's, you know, before you today for your consideration and approval. There, you know, we do plan to come to the board in January to revisit the existing goals that are associated with House Bill III and specific student outcomes that are required by the Texas Education Agency by law. There are some revisions to those goals that need to be made, and I know that I had a discussion with the internal auditor about that particular piece. And at that time in January, we intend to bring you where we are in terms of our interim outcomes for this school year, based on assessment information that is being gathered by the academic and school leadership departments.
Mr. Call.
Just since we're having this conversation, I definitely would not like to revisit any of this. I don't see any material difference between a board goal and a district goal. We have spent so much time on this, and if there's tweaks that need to happen in the future, we can make those tweaks in the future to reflect whatever the will of the board is. I think, I think it's time to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Call. Ms. Hernandez?
I agree with trustee Call. After as many sessions that we had, I thought, it was understood to me that, yes, we may have maybe interchanged what we think as goals and levers and objectives and such, but I understood them all encompassing each other, and I don't think we can do our board goals separating ourselves from what's being presented to here. I think that they're all basically the same, and if we need to pull some out for ourselves, we can, but at the same time, I understood it as we were doing this in conjunction with our board goals.
Sorry, I'm going to comment myself. I heard clearly today, right now, that these are our board goals. That's what I heard clearly, correct? Okay. Ms. Hanani, I've got the floor, please, okay? I understand, we're calling these levers and we're calling these essential actions. I know that when we went through this process, I did comment, and I made my comments, and I spoke about measurable outcomes, so forth and so on. However, in the interaction in which we all participated in, this is what came out. And I supported what came out as a group-involved effort to develop board goals. It wasn't necessarily my preferred position, but because there was consensus and because there was a lot of work going on it, this is what was developed. And I've seen this very clearly through the process that we went through. And so I think the time to have pushed a point was in those meetings that we had, which were public meetings. But at the end of the day, this is what, by consensus, has come out to be presented today for our action. It is my understanding very clearly that the levers match up to overarching goals, that the essential actions are matching up to the objectives towards achieving those overarching goals, and then there's a whole list of KPIs that we came up with, that we threw out there, put on the board, that are, as was explained a little bit earlier, still in play. But I will say, and this was my argument, and I stand by it firmly, those KPIs belong to Ms. Ayvedra and her staff. They are not ours to approve because those KPIs, those measurable goals, are going to be how Ms. Ayvedra achieves these strategic goals that we're adopting today. And I'm, again, excuse me, very adamant that this board is diving in too deep when we tell Ms. Ayvedra how to do her job. Now, with that said, I believe, and I heard as we were going through the process, that there's flexibility within that, and that's why there are 71 KPIs that exist, because it allows Ms. Ayvedra, during this process, if she identifies through her team that something is running into a roadblock, there can be a shift in that, and we can change. And that's what a plan is supposed to be. It's supposed to be flexible. Because I do believe, and I understand, Dr. Asaveta, you mentioned what Dr. Inohosa said, I do believe in strategic plans, the three-to-five-year plans. I think those are essentials. And so I disagree with what we are told in that, in that statement. This is our direction for the next three to five years, but it is up to Ms. Ayvedra and our administrative staff to determine how we're going to achieve these goals and then report back to us on their achievement towards those goals. And that's really my position on this. And with all that said, I stand with Mr. Call. I think the work has been done, and it's time that we move on and decide how we're going to move forward, or decide if we're going to approve this plan or if we are not. So with that said, unless there's other discussion, I would like to ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion. I move that the board adopt the proposed district strategic blueprint to include the strategic levers and essential actions as presented.
Is there a second?
Second, and I'd like to thank staff. We, I know we keep saying the board put a lot of time in there, but every meeting and workshop that we had, I know that staff was at each and every one of those meetings. When we went back to the drawing board, I think twice, you guys were the ones that did the work. So thank you very much. I think we got to a really strong place and looking forward to how we break out these goals in the future and measure them.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five to one. We will now go to item 7B, discuss and take appropriate action on adoption of 2022-23 El Paso ISD Superintendent's Appraisal Instrument and Evaluation Timeline.
Do we have speakers to the item?
I'm sorry?
Do we have speakers to the item?
Do we have speakers? Okay, if we have speakers, I'll go ahead and take them now.
The first speaker is Jonna Perillo.
Hi, thank you very much. I have a handout. I don't know if I have any way of getting it over there, but thank you, just to share with you all. I'll start talking now, keep things as short as I can. My name's Jonna Perillo. I'm an education historian and professor of English education at UTEP, and I'm the, this year I wrote or published a book called Educating the Enemy. In this book, I study the state of El Paso schools in 1946 and 1947, the year that Operation Paperclip brought 118 Nazi scientists and their children to Fort Bliss and to El Paso schools. On the whole, the book captures a tale of segregation, education inequity, and a patriotic curriculum that heralded white privilege and achievement. Mexican-American students, who comprised over half of the El Paso school population, were consistently relegated to second-class education situations that were quite easy for me to document. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about those situations and how I think it plays into a particular part of the superintendent evaluation issue today. So the map that I've just shared with you all was connected to school zoning and transfer policies. El Paso's school policy stated that while only Anglo students could transfer from south to north-side schools, only Mexican, as they called it, students could to north-side schools, only Mexican, as they called it, students could transfer from north to south. This is because south-side schools were so overcrowded that students took classes in hallways and in auditoriums, sometimes four classes to an auditorium, and attended school in many cases for only half a day. South-side schools could lack libraries and cafeterias, meaning that they also offered, lacked the programs associated with those spaces. When Burleson parents confronted Superintendent A. Chui about it and about why Mesita got improvements that they were promised first, he called them communists and left the room. So you'll see how many schools in this map feed into a single high school buoy, which existed solely because Mexican-American parents demanded it. But there was, there were no dearth of teenagers in South El Paso, right? The reason why one school could work is because they attended schools in split shifts and because many Mexican-American students felt unwelcome there. So this map also traces a more recent phenomenon, which is why I'm sharing it with you right now, which is school closures. You'll see that each school with a red X over it has been closed, most in the last decade, some even more recently than that. And so in this sense, the map, to me, traces the continued legacy of El Paso's history of discrimination and marginalization of some of its most economically and politically vulnerable youth. It's a map essentially of El Paso's continued unequal access to schools, and our recent court case agreed with this assessment. So I-
Your time is up.
Oh, okay. Can I say two more sentences? No.
One more sentence.
Okay, one more sentence. I think it's incredibly dangerous to have, as part of an evaluation, something that mandates school closures, and I don't want to see our superintendent or any superintendent tied to that history. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Hilda Vegas.
Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I know you brought up the issue of these meetings being open to the public, but it's really hard for parents to keep up with all these decisions, right? And I think that, looking at the 15% mandatory reduction, whether, call it right sizing, we just went through a right size not that long ago, and we're still waiting to see what was the benefit out of that. And maybe the district benefited that $1 million of savings, but we haven't seen an analysis as to how that benefited our community. We haven't seen the programs, the additional programs that were supposed to come after the closures. We don't see an assessment of equity in these schools to ensure that the children's needs are met, not just because, not based on enrollment, but on their needs. We haven't really seen a benefit after the closures. And so with that said, when you talk about doing cuts, 15% cuts throughout across the district, we always know that those cuts are going to come to our community, and it's always going to affect communities like ours, because we're always treated the same as every other school in the district, right? And so I don't think that that should be part of the assessment or the evaluation of the superintendent. I think that we just settled in good faith. Familias Unidas sat and settled in good faith to move forward and address the historic neglect that our schools have been subjected to for many years. I think that that should be priority when it comes to the new superintendent, and I know that we've met with her, and I feel that she has the intention to do that, but when, she's also burdened to do cuts? We just saw a bunch of cuts at Buoy. We don't have the programs, and our schools have never been given the opportunity to rebuild themselves and to attract students. We lost a lot of teachers after the closures. Has there been an assessment of how many teachers we lost because of the closures? How many students we lost? That that translates into resources that the district needs? How is that going to affect the image of the district in the future when we continue to cut, when we continue to run the district as a business, right? And that above all, how is that going to help our outcomes in our barrio? When you, if you go right now to Aoi, Aoi lost over 200 students in this year, and if you implement 15% cuts in, within a year or two, that school's going to close. And yet, there's not, no analysis as to why we lost 200 kids. There is no analysis as to why the young can't retain their kids. There is no analysis as to why we don't have programs and we continue to lose kids. I was at a school function where we had previous teachers from Buoy telling us to go to other high schools. Now they work at Jeff, now they work in other high schools, telling the parents that they should go to other schools because Buoy has no future, because Buoy has not, doesn't have the programs to support the kids.
Your time is up.
With that said, that should not be part of the evaluation, and the priority should be in addressing the historic neglecting of schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Semelie de Azlan. It's unclear what this item would require of our new superintendent. Is Ms. Sayavedra being asked to take actions that would reduce the number of schools by 15% by 2025? A few of you seem really unsure about what right sizing means, though we know what it means in our community. We believe that this is going to be a source of confusion, and moving forward with this item without that being clarified is going to create more problems. We don't think you should create this criteria for the superintendent to be required to close 15% of schools. Excuse me. After we experienced closures and consolidations, our kids and teachers and staff are now in overcrowded schools. What does right sizing mean in the barrio? EPISD has yet to answer that question, and they've yet to ask that question of the residents. When will EPISD evaluate the historic neglect? We oppose basing any portion of the evaluation on the superintendent's ability to supposedly right-size. Ms. Sayavedra is the first Latina woman superintendent at EPISD. No such requirement was imposed on her two predecessors, one of whom served jail time for pushing students out of schools, and one who resigned after being sued for fraud during the tenure of several current trustees. Ms. Sayavedra has demonstrated her ability to identify ways to improve the financial conditions of EPISD. For example, in June this year, she highlighted the need to improve daily attendance of enrolled students. This would allow for EPISD to draw on additional funding. In her short time here, she has demonstrated a commitment to considering all options. School closures should never be one of them. Further, this action is premature. As the board knows, the district spent significant funds on an updated facilities assessment. We anticipate EPISD conducting a comprehensive equity analysis as a result of our recent settlement on school closures. Requiring a percentage reduction of facilities without this information will lead to further problems in our community. Closing schools, reducing programs, laying off staff, and other drastic measures will hurt the district's students, will hurt the district's enrollment, and will hurt the budget in the long term. Requiring school closures without considering factors brought to light by the lawsuit, which determined that there was discrimination, which determined that it was done poorly, which determined that it was done unfairly. Without addressing that, you will continue on that path of historic neglect into our future. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sarai Lopez.
I find it very worrisome that the right sizing, the school district, is being included into the superintendent annual evaluation tool. As trustee Call said that he appreciated the plan and procedure being so thorough and regarding the, so he said that regarding the school boundaries, but why is it that the same isn't being done for school closures or resizing the school district? It should be just as thorough as the school closures. I just don't, I don't comprehend how it's not, you don't give it the same importance, yet you're affecting communities and children. Also, right sizing should take, should take the community and parents into consideration and deliver a detailed strategic plan. Just like the trustee Irobali said, I would rather do it right than quick. I would say that this is a lease that you could, that could be done to honor EPISD's commitment to provide inclusive and fair learning experiences that support the whole children. Just have the courtesy and do not keep the communities that you'll be affecting in the dark. Be transparent, as, I mean, the word transparent was used over and over and over when delivering this, yet I don't think you're being transparent with resizing or, I mean, however you want to frame it. It's closures, consolidation, you're going to affect children and communities, yet it's so easy to include that, but we don't have a detailed plan. We don't have, like, I don't think you should include it in this. It just feels like you're, you're making the same mistake over, that, the same thing that happened with Bell and Burleson. You're going to keep doing it to the same people, same demographic, social demographic. Just take the children, the communities into consideration and save this for a later time where it's more detailed, more structured, more concrete. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Amy Buck.
Hello, thank you for the time to speak today. I'm an educational researcher and a practitioner, and for the last 10 years, I've studied public school closures. My research reveals the very real human cost of closures while also making visible who benefits from their erasure. I want to make two points tonight, disagreeing with the inclusion of a right sizing in the district by 15% by 2025, point of evaluation on the proposed version of the superintendent's appraisal instrument. I understand, as do others, the term right sizing to include school closures. First, nowhere else in the nation are school closures included on superintendent's evaluations. Superintendents are evaluated on things like budget or an academic performance or gains, in other words, actual outcomes. In studies on media reporting of school closures across the nation, school closures were never viewed as an outcome. They were a means to a set of purported outcomes, like more funding, better academics. Why would closures on their face be meaningful unless they led to other meaningful outcomes? And if those, if it's those downstream outcomes that matter, our superintendent can accomplish them without, and if our superintendent can accomplish them without closures, so be it. Second, any decision to close schools need to be taken with great care and with attention to the fact that most school closures in urban areas happen mostly in low-income black and brown communities and at great cost to them. Not only is there much research documenting this, EPISD's recent settlement with Familias Unidas, the community group who sued EPISD in June of 2020 alleging that the district discriminated against poor Hispanic and Mexican-American families, particularly those in the Chamisal neighborhood, when it closed Alta Vista, Bell, and Burleson Elementary Schools at the end of the 2018-2019 school year, offers a current and local example. Rather than dismiss the case as EPISD petitioned, Judge Brignones found that Familias Unidas, as El Paso Matters reports, has produced evidence that is sufficiently detailed to establish a genuine issue concerning every essential element of this case. Incentivizing public school closures on an assessment interest instrument and without transparent facilities, a transparent facilities master plan developed with community input, real community input to guide them, could very likely result in more discriminatory policy decisions that dispossess and displace Hispanic and Mexican-American communities from the places and institutions that they have created over time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Valdez, can I get a motion on this and then we could go into discussion?
Okay, so is there a motion?
Yeah. I move to approve, or actually, I move to exclude, I'm sorry, 3.3 from the superintendent's appraisal instrument.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Can we have discussion?
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, yes, you may have discussion.
I should argue.
Go ahead.
On this, like I said at last week's meeting, I wanted to separate this and have the board vote on specifically 3.3. So on that, I just didn't want to give you that surprise, Ms. Sayavedra, and I'm moving forward with this using Robert's Rules of Order, but I guess I have questions that I would like the public to have on the record before moving forward on voting specifically for this item. One, the first question I have is, are we in a financial crisis, Ms. Sayavedra?
I would say that right now, at this fiscal year, we've got, we're healthy. We've got 89 days of fund balance, and we have, you know, been able to implement a number of cost-saving measures that have recovered $8 million. However, we're projected to lose enrollment again next year. We're in the process of determining just how much that's going to be and what that funding, how that might impact us going forward. And again, we're developing a plan, a sustainable plan, so that when Esr goes away, we can continue to enjoy the health, the financial health that we enjoy today, right?
And are we, we're still maintaining the four schools that closed in 2019, correct?
Yes.
So, so that's costs that we're, we're not really seeing because there's so many properties on the books at EPIC, and there hasn't really been anything to move forward with, with that. At this point, are you recommending that we close schools, from what you were saying, 15% would be in the right sizing? So is that something that you, as a superintendent, would want to do?
What I would share is that, well, let me, first of all, explain what that 15%, you know, when we worked to create a measurable outcome as requested by some board members, I would share that 15%, we currently have 24 schools that are, would be deemed under capacity based on a previous definition of the board, you know, from a, from a, from the assessments that were done in the past. 15% would be a maximum of four schools by 2025. I would say that we, at this point, are not prepared to recommend any school closures to the school board. As I have articulated during the boundary conversation, over the course of the next year, our plan is to really work through the development of a facilities master plan that really articulates a process where we can engage with the community. We have all of the data available to us so that we can make, you know, very intentional recommendations to the board as part of a bond plan and, you know, any other plan that would include program expansion or movement of programs, you know, from, from one school to another. So in the immediate, we are not prepared to close schools.
Yeah, and I really just want to comment on this, you know, I was delighted to hear Amy Buck speaking, is also a fellow school closure scholar, and as many of you know, my dissertation was the case study here at EPISD with Familias Unidas that did sue the district, and as I saw today, I wasn't part of that lawsuit, and I had to be excluded because of my study. But one, one thing that my study concluded, among other things, was that EPISD did this, this closure without the impact that it was going to have on children. And here we are again, it's like deja vu, almost four years later, discussing the same thing without a plan. Nothing has really changed. We're, this lever, this 3.3, is really putting you between a rock and a hard place, Ms. Sayavedra. This district has had a big distrust in the community, and by moving this forward, the, what you have built this year as a superintendent, your connection with the community, is really putting you back on that Juan Cabrera track by including this, where the previous administration had no regard for the community, and I genuinely think that you- no regard for the community. And I genuinely think that you do regard the community. You've established that. You're putting us in a better place, and I'm really worried about what this is going to do to your superintendency if this is included. So, at this point, I don't have any other questions or comments.
Are there, are there any, any other comments at this point on this part?
Yeah, I have some comments.
Miss Hanani?
This was a difficult board meeting for me. You know, for me, it feels like I want to say this is business as usual for EPISD. Honestly, this feels worse. And the reason it feels worse is because, as Ms. Bach mentioned, this is unprecedented. No one in the country, no school district that I could find, you know, she sort of supported the research that I did on the topic, uses school closures or rightsizing as a metric for evaluating the superintendent. I went through all 78 strategic plans for the Council of Great City Schools, school districts, some of which include large urban school districts that have similar, you know, demographics, enrollment numbers, and are experiencing enrollment decline. And I couldn't even find an example of any of those districts, including rightsizing or school closures, as part of their strategic plan, unless it was included or as tied to a facilities master plan. And there's a reason for that. As school district governance models evolved, best practices indicate that our approach to governing should be focused on student outcomes. Council of Great City Schools also provides a framework for this. We've been to those conferences, we've heard it. And that's that, and this is their definition, student outcomes are a measure of a school system, of school system results that are student results rather than adult results. Outcomes that are a measure of what students know or are able to do. Student outcomes are distinct from adult outcomes. I believe EPISD should be focusing on our students. The other thing is that part of our role as trustees is to listen to community feedback. We had our hopes and dreams tours that we touted as a way that we could get feedback from the community. Not once did the subject of rightsizing come to the fore. On the contrary, we did have community, significant community feedback regarding our approach to school closures. So much feedback, as you've heard, that we were sued by families in our district, and the judge opined that there was a genuine issue for trial, and we settled. Is this really how we are responding to that? But really, though, to call this long-term fiscal planning would be a misnomer. Research shows that the loss of a school within a neighborhood reduces property values. Research shows that it often costs more to educate children that have been displaced during school closures. Have any of our taxpayers been provided with a cost analysis that includes those components? In the, they just, just mentioned, Ms. Valverde just mentioned how we're utilizing the metrics to establish the criteria for seeing how a school is determined to be underutilized. In the opinion, a reasonable fact-finder could find that decisions to discount certain substantive factors in our enrollment projections, events discriminatory intent. Have we figured that part out yet? So, for me, passing this, we're saying that we're willing to close neighborhood schools, possibly even if there's no comprehensive plan, before we even commit to identifying and rectifying operational inefficiencies, despite the fact that the superintendent is not recommending school closures within the next two years, despite the fact that the district and our financial office is not recommending school closures, despite the fact that we're placing something on a superintendent evaluation that's subject to board approval. How are we even going to manage that? How is she going to manage that? Despite the fact that we just settled a lawsuit and have not addressed the settlement issues, despite the fact that we have not had an evaluative and transparent cost analysis, or even have a current facilities master plan, despite the fact that this is not a student outcomes indicator. So, this feels like we want to perform CPR on a broken bone. Again, I think it's a misnomer to say that this is long-term fiscal planning. I'm disappointed that there were a lot of details that rose to the top in our strategic master plan that didn't make it into the superintendent evaluation, but this, for some reason, did. No one on this board has not acknowledged the need for consolidations for future sustainability. We just don't have a plan yet. And this is a very, very dangerous precedent to set. The justification that we need to close schools to balance our budget is simply not based on any evidence provided to us by the district, and I hope that this board reverses course.
Mr. Call?
As people can tell, there's some strong feelings about this. The insinuation that there, that there's no plan for this is, is just not accurate. And one of the speakers during public comment kind of mentioned that it's kind of hard for, for folks to follow this process, and although the district tries to be transparent. To make it simple, the board sets the what for the school district, and the staff, including the superintendent, sets out the why. Or, excuse me, the, the how that's done. So, the fact that there, that there is no plan is because the plan is forthcoming. The superintendent, if this is approved, the superintendent has till 2025 to, to see some, to see some progress on that. Certainly, that's enough time for the superintendent to, and staff to come up with a plan. The insinuation also that the superintendent isn't on board with this has nothing to do with, with the approval of, of, of this item. She never said that she wasn't on board with it, and even if she did say that, it's, it's irrelevant because what we're doing right now is we're approving the evaluation of the superintendent. I'm sure lots of people would like to, you know, design the performance evaluation for themselves, but that's, that's not the way the real world works. It's the board's responsibility to come up with the evaluation instrument for the superintendent. As to the, as to the statement that other school districts don't do this, I'm not sure that that's true, but even if it was, it's, it's also irrelevant. We want to make El Paso Independent School District the premier school district in the area. And whatever, speaking for myself, whatever I have to do as a trustee to make sure that we're fiscally solvent long-term in order to deliver on the promise for the kids to, to make this the premier district in the area, I'm, I'm willing to do that. There, another, another thing that, that was, seems like it's kind of misunderstood is this 15% metric. This is not us instructing the superintendent to close 15% of our schools. What this is, is us instructing the superintendent to take a look at potentially closing 15% of our schools that are less than half full. Those schools cost a lot of money to, to, to run and operate. Every school needs a librarian, a, you know, a nurse, a principal, heating and cooling costs. These are, these are really expensive, really expensive schools to run. And with, with a lot of schools that are very underutilized, it just, to me, it doesn't make sense to, to have potentially a situation where there's two schools that were, are within a mile or two or three of each other that are both less than half full. It just, it doesn't, it doesn't pass the smell test, in my opinion. And if, if somehow, you know, after we approve this, if we do end up approving this, we, these schools that can bring their enrollment numbers up so that they're no longer underutilized, I'd be the first trustee to step in and say, hey, let's go ahead and drop this, this provision from the superintendent's evaluation because it's no longer necessary. I also heard it say that, that EPISD was, was found by a court of law to have discriminated. That just simply is not true. No court of law found that EPISD was discriminatory in the way that they closed schools in, in recent years. We, the fact is, is that we just passed one of the, one of the biggest compensation increases for our people, and we were happy to do that in recent, in recent history with the help of our, with the help of a lot of money from the federal government in the form of ESR. That money is not going to be there next year or the year after. And we were, based on the numbers that we saw recently, we, we have potentially a massive budget shortfall in the years to come. I would hate to see, you know, programming get cut, staffing get cut at these, at, at these, these campuses throughout our district. I think this is the right thing to do for the long-term financial fiscal responsibility of our district. Reasonable people can disagree here, but the reason, the reason, the reason the voters elect trustees, among other things, is to, to make sure that we have enough funds to operate our school district long-term. And that's, that's what this, that's what this item is all about.
Mr. Rubal?
So, I'm going to need to ask Ms. Seas some question, Ms. Aguita, just to verify some of this at some point. But I, I just want to make some clarifying points here. Today, we're not closing any schools. There's no, there's no item on this agenda saying we're going to close down four schools tomorrow, and that's the end of it. What this is saying, as you heard in the last item, we're going to develop the following. A facilities master plan can include a facilities assessment, a demographic study, a school boundary outlook, recommended programs, rightsizing efforts, and Ms. Seas, you included an equity study in that, saying that that would be a part of this. That's what this is saying. This is saying that that's going to be developed, and there's going to be action that we have to evaluate and look at our plan. So, I just want to clear that up right now. And then that leads to the next statement that's being constantly made, which is, this is a plan to close down schools without a, closing down schools without a plan. Again, if I recall from what the conversation was in the last item, these six items will be used to develop a plan that will then be used, correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, so, we're in the stage of development of a plan for school, we'll call it rightsizing because that includes programming, school closures, consolidations, as well as staffing and enrollment. That's going to be all considered. So, I just want to be very clear that it's a comprehensive plan. And if you look at the item, which is a lever 3.3, I believe, yes, 3.3, it lists each and every one of those because those are going to be used as artifacts over the next course of the, I believe it's the three years from 2025, to develop that plan. And in conversation with Ms. Valverde, I think each trustee has had conversations with Ms. Valverde over these levers and these KPIs. And the conversation I had with Ms. Valverde was, it isn't fair to say a superintendent has to close down schools tomorrow. What we're asking Ms. Valverde to do is build these artifacts, build a conservative plan that really looks at the past of EPISD. I came in as a new trustee. I'm the newest person on this board. I'm the only one that went to runoff. Everyone else on this board said that there were lack of controls and accountability with the previous superintendent. What this is doing is giving this board authority, saying, we're not going to close schools down like we did in the past. Show us a plan, give us approval, and we'll act on it. That's what we're saying in this item. It's just not true to say that we're going to close down schools. And I want to remind people, the Northeast had, I think, the most school closures, if I'm not sure. I had Dallas Shuster and Crosby combined into Archie D. Reynolds, three schools there. I had Terrace and Collins combined into Bobby Joe Hill, that's two more there. And I had Fannin closed down combined with Bradley. The Northeast saw the school closures just as much. And so, when we look at the things that we have to do, each and every one of these kids, as we saw with Mr. Warnicki's presentation, they're in those facilities a thousand times better. They're getting programming and opportunities that these kids would never have had, being in the existing school that they were in with the existing buckshot approach we did on programming. And so, what this is saying is, let's just take a cold, hard look, and let's make a plan. And so, with that, I just want to go into some numbers because I, I think it's important for us to know. So, from 2015 to 2022, we saw a decrease of 10,382 students in EPISD. From what I understand, it's $6,160 per student that we get for ADA for the entire year. Is that correct, Ms. Aguita?
That's correct.
So, and I'll go in through a greater breakdown. So, that was a loss of $63 million, $63 million point nine dollars that this district lost over the last, again, that's from 2015 to 2021. So, I'll go year by year. 2015 to 16, we saw a $5.5 million loss. 16 to 17, $5.1 million. 17 to 18, $6.7. 18 to 19, $6.2. 19 to 20, that's where we get into the hold harmless because of COVID. So, we're seeing over $23 million in losses from the decrease of enrollment and through ADA. Is that, is that?
That's correct.
Okay. We have to do something. We have to do long-term planning. I'm not ready to close down schools, and I don't think any of us want to be up here saying school closures is the, the one plan that this school district has. But it's a reality that we've all had a conversation on. When we approved the budget back in June, every trustee on this day is agreed that consolidations and closure was a reality. What I want to do is say, we thought about it in 2022 when it was something that we need to do in 2025, versus we did a plan in 2024 when we had to do it in 2025. I don't want to be the school board that closed down schools without a plan. I don't want to be the school board that closed down schools just because we didn't take the measures and the steps. Ms. Valverde, if I heard you correctly, there's $8 million that we've managed to save to date in savings. And what was the deficit that we're going to be looking at three years? It's, I know just shy of 30?
Correct, 29.5.
29.5. So, by my count, that's still 21.5 that we need to find somewhere. Is that correct? And if ADA continues to drop, I know that your projections were there, but if ADA, or sorry, if enrollment drops even more, that could mean an even larger deficit, correct?
That is correct.
Of the ESR funding that we're using, can you, do you know how much of that's going to have to be absorbed by EPISD because we did it in programming that would need to be sustainable?
So, what we've done is we've reclassified funding for some teachers through the ESR that are going to be moving back into the roles, which creates some of the deficits that we reported.
And that was included in the, the deficit you, in?
Yes.
The 29.5?
That's correct.
How about the programming, like the after-school programs and all the other things that you guys included in ESR? Is that plan to sunset once ESR funding ends, or are we looking to continue it?
So, the, the plan is to evaluate and assess what programs we've implemented and how we're going to move forward with the current budget to allocate either to entitlements and/or the local fund.
So, fair to say that the 25.5 doesn't include those programs because we're under the evaluation? So, that deficit could actually be upwards of $30 million when you evaluate those programs and costs?
That's correct.
Okay. That's the harsh reality that we're sitting in here. Even if we saved $8 million, it's still $22 million that we're going to have to look at. And we've heard it, and I was at the Leadership EPISD Board Training that Ms. Valverde and staff are doing. I think it's a wonderful service to this community to get people to understand what trustees have to look at when making these tough decisions. This is one of the decisions none of us want to make or look at, but we have to. So, part of the did you know that was included was EPISD has 76 campuses, YSD has 52, SISD has 49. Approximate student enrollment for EPISD is 50,000, YSD is 37, SISD is 47. Average student cap, per campus for El Paso ISD, it's 658, Isleta at 711, and for Socorro ISD, it's 957. When I drive by an Isleta or a Socorro campus, I am absolutely enthralled and amazed by how beautiful those campuses are and the 21st learning century, century facilities that these kids are encountering day in and day out. It blows my mind. Then I go look at Andrus, and I see what Andrus looks like, and I hear what the enrollment's at. And those kids deserve the best. I can't afford to bring any kind of opportunity to them if we continue going down this rob Peter to pay Paul, find a way to balance the budget, and here we are. We need to look at how we're going to shape this district and be that district of choice. That's what this lever says. Says we're going to be the destination district, and this is how we do it. The only other thing I'll add here is just the full-time employees. EPISD has just shy of 8,000, YSD is 7.3,000, and SISD is 5.7. SISD is 3,000 students behind us today, and they are at 49 campuses and considerably less staff. We have to start planning and looking towards the future, and I don't want to be the guy at the end of the day saying, we're waiting till 2024 for a 2025 decision. We wouldn't expect it from our staff. It's no different for the district and the trustees to do the same. So, I'll end with this. I know that we continue to talk about our single-member district of we're representing this area. I'm a very proud representative of the Northeast, but at the end of the day, when I go home and I, or when I come here and I come to work, or when I'm representing the district, I represent EPISD. That's all of our districts. That's every student and every member of this EPIS community. So, whereas I hear this community right now saying, hey, this is something that concerns me, go out to the Northeast and have some conversations with these parents and these taxpayers, and it's a very different story. It's a very different conversation. Are there concerns? Absolutely. But again, I can just list off another seven schools that were closed down that we just did in this last round of closures. EPIS, the Northeast didn't go unscathed. It's, it's time to kind of look and evaluate because there's still schools out there that those kids deserve 10 times better thing. One thing I love going out with Mr. Warnicki is when we go to one of the schools that have just passed their, their expiration date, we'll say, or there's a lot of work, is that the kids deserve better. That's, that's what drives Mr. Warnicki, is that these kids deserve better, these kids, we owe it to them. That's how I feel in this situation. So, while I respect trustee Hanani and Dr. Asavé's points, this is not a plan to close down a school tomorrow. This is a five-year, four-year plan, I guess, three-year plan to get to that point. Thank you, Dr. President Valverde.
And I would like to take an opportunity to, to discuss here. First, I'm just going to ask a question, Ms. Valverde. In, in the language that is provided in 3.3, it, I can see how it reads, strengthen the district's financial solvency by strategically rightsizing facilities by 15% by 2025. But then we continue, and there's an asterisk, or a star, strengthen the district's financial solvency by creating a facilities master plan that includes facilities assessment, demographic study, school boundary outlook, recommended program, expansion, and rightsizing measures. If you look at the first sentence taken by itself, it sounds like you're closing schools. But when you take a look at the entire comment- But when you take a look at the entire com, comment, it looks like you're developing a plan for right sizing in the future. Can you answer what it is that, that statement is saying?
I would say that we included the second statement, because in the immediate, what we can produce is the development of a comprehensive facilities master plan. I will not be able to meet that metric, because I, we are not, as a school district, prepared to close any schools within the year.
So then, we can say that even though we're, we've got a statement here, right sizing by 15% by 25%, the second statement really is...
You mean by 2025?
By 2025. The second statement really is saying is you're gonna be able, is to develop the plan to be able to do that right sizing, in essence.
It would be development of a plan to bring recommended, recommendations to the board. So a process and a plan, so that we could bring recommendations to the board for its consideration for any future consolidations or closures, that, or program expansion, development, and/or bond planning. But what I'm sharing is that I included that second statement, because at this point, with the original statement standing alone, I could not meet that metric in the immediate. In the immediate, the, the, the best that we can do as a school district is create a plan that currently doesn't exist.
Okay, so then, what we're saying, again, the combination of, of this entire thing, in essence, we're going to develop, we're gonna ask you to develop a plan by 2025.
Well, if I look at the, at the formative assessment cycle for this, this superintendent evaluation, once adopted by the board, will be used, you know, year over year. I mean, you all as a, as a board can review it annually to make any adjustments. But in this first year, for the school year of 22, 23, the second statement is what I can produce to be evaluated for the current school year. I cannot produce anything associated with the first, without, with the first state, with the, with the preceding statement without a plan.
Okay.
So that's why the, the point assignment speaks to where the asterisk is, artifacts and documents and systems to create the conditions, the process for us to bring well-intentioned recommendations to the board that have been vetted, you know, and with the community, with the administration, and all of the moving parts that we articulated in the earlier discussion.
Okay. So then, I'm hearing both sides of this argument. And, and, and I, I, I think there's, there's validity to, to both sides. But I've also heard that there's agreement that the reality is, we're going to face the day where we're gonna have to consolidate once again. We're gonna have to right-size the district. And we're quite possibly gonna have to close additional schools. That's just a reality. I think Mr. Rubal made it perfectly clear on, on the budgeting process and, and the realities behind, the finance behind it. But what I've heard, and I heard from the community, or the people commenting, is statements such as, we were sued before because we didn't have a plan. But in the same breath, I'm hearing, don't support this, because we don't want you to create a plan. And so for me, that's not making sense. We're bumping up. So what I'm saying here is, item 3.3 should be more focused on the development of a plan versus closing schools by 2025. So my question to the, the, all board members, this is a point that we could possibly come to an agreement on, where rather than saying we're gonna have right sizing done by 2025, can it be amended so that the statement can say that we are going to have a plan in place that considers everything so that in 2026, we can move forward with implementing right sizing? So, so I'm gonna throw that out. I, I see agreement on Dr. Asavé.
Yeah, and this is basically what we've been saying, or at least I've been saying since early November, like, we need a plan. How are you gonna add closed schools without a plan? How are you not gonna have a facilities master plan? We're doing a facilities assessment. I've been asking for a school closure plan my entire time on the board. I've been asking for a transition plan. None of that has happened. And we came to this really huge impasse about six weeks ago. And it was all because school closures had to be a part of it. And that's what I wanted to clarify, that, yeah, we're not closing schools today, but we're asking the superintendent to close schools today. And what we should be asking the superintendent to do is build a plan. And that's what she has committed, to saying that she will build that plan. And for the first time in my entire time on the board, I actually believe the superintendent wants to do that and create a plan and do it the right way. And, and as we, many of us know, school closures are a last resort. But if we have to consolidate, and we have to do something like that, and we have a plan in place, like the superintendent wants to have, then let's do that. But let's not include that first sentence. Let's just create the asterisk that's there, the entire part after that.
Could I amend the motion? Trustee Valade?
Uh, let me just make sure that everybody's had an opportunity to comment, because I know Mr. Rubal would like to.
So, so this is, this is where I, I kind of, this, this is, just Ms. Collins?
I apologize, but I, go, go ahead. I apologize.
Are you sure?
I'm too quick.
Okay. I think that what we have to remember is, in the conversation we just had before on this previous item, is right sizing doesn't just mean school closures and consolidation. There's programming, there's other opportunities that exist in this district. So if Ms. Ayvedra can identify 15% of, of programs or things of that that then can save costs and bring those down. And we said, we, we, this has not been a secret on this board. Ms. Ayvedra, you have said several times, when we evaluate and retool and repurpose our approach to programming from buckshot to precision, there's going to be a significant change in altering of what's gonna occur in this district. And we're gonna see it instantaneously as that comes to light. For me, President Valade, I like the item as it is. I think it's a very strong message to what we need to do as a district. I can, again, read off the numbers again, but we're looking at $23.6 million that's been lost through enrollment in ADA. I don't know what tomorrow brings. I don't think any of us knows what tomorrow's brings. But I do know that that deficit continues to rise the more that we look, the more that we have these conversations. We just saw an unprecedented increase in valuations from, um, let's see, the CAD. That's not gonna happen every year. We, we know this is a reality in El Paso, where you can't incre, enable to increase taxes and valuations on the El Paso homeowner, who, again, El Paso's unique, unlike most metros, and I'd say any metro. The commercial, um, commercial industry does not share the brunt of the tax base here in El Paso. It's actually the residential folks that take that burden. And so I, I just don't trust that we don't have, we don't have enough information to say, well, let's just push it down the road and kick this down the proverbial, the can down the proverbial road here. I think we can make a strong statement. Ms. Ayvedra, if I'm not mistaken, when we talked last night, you said annually, we could reevaluate our goals, our KPIs, and our metrics, and retool and repurpose based on what's occurring in that moment. If for some reason we come back next year and we have 60,000 kids in our schools and enrollment's taking off, or I'll use Campbell de Soul as a great example. Campbell de Soul kicks off, we have an influx of enrollment, and we're seeing surplus after surplus in our budget. Well, then, the board at that time can then say, hey, let's reevaluate, retool. Is that correct?
I would say that the board annually can revisit the superintendent's evaluation and amend it as they deem necessary. So by the same token, if we landed on what Mr. Valade suggested, once the plan is developed, which we're, we're, we're on a fast track to get that moving. Now, the, the plan would be developed, but we would have to initiate the plan as well. But, I mean, again, that's what, that's what I can produce in year one.
Yep.
Of this superintendent's evaluation.
And when we spoke, Ms. Ayvedra, that was what you, I, I, because that's where we had a point of conversation where you, you believed it wasn't gonna be, you weren't able to grade you on this metric as is without these items added. And in conversation, that's where these artifacts and documents came to play. Is that correct? And so President Valade, when we talked about the budget, 29.5 million was a lot to stomach. We now have $8 million of savings. We might have additional def, or by, a deficit that comes in because of programming. $22 million is, is, is a lot to swallow. I would like the item as is. I can only speak for myself, but I'll proceed as, as you see fit.
I'd like to...
Go ahead, Dan, Mr. Cole.
I, I appreciate the, um, the sentiment, trustee Valade, to trying to find some kind of common ground. And I, I think it's important to remember that if, if there is any type of right sizing, which includes a school closure in the future, that, that's gonna have to be a board action. So we're gonna have to vote on that anyway. To me, what, what 3.3 is, is that this, this board is willing to send a very clear message that we are willing to do what it takes to ensure the long-term financial stability of our district. I don't, I don't want to be the trustee that has to go to the voters three years from now and ask for a tax increase, because we blew it. I don't want to be the trustee that has to tell our, our, our people, our employees, three years from now that we have to cut 15% of their, of their jobs or lay them off. I'm, I'm not willing to do that. So this is, this is my way of, just speaking for myself here, this is, this is my way as a trustee of saying, I'm willing to take the criticism. I'm willing to take the heat to ensure that our kids are taken care of long-term. Because it's, trust me, there's, there's not a trustee up here, especially not me, that takes any joy in, in any of this. It's, it's something, the right sizing of the district is something that needs to be done long-term.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. And Ms. Hanani, before I get to you, I just want to also make a, a brief, just comment real quick. So we're focusing on one item here, 3.3. But there are five levers. Each lever have numerous expectations that we're setting of the superintendent. Several of those expectations are what we're talking about right here with the right sizing concept, especially in number one. Okay? When we talk about increasing PK through six extended learning opportunities by a percentage, we're saying the same thing in right sizing, that we can do that through right sizing. In number one, we're saying right there that the superintendent can do it. Increase PK 12th grade student participation, UIL extracurricular co-curricular activities, right? By levels. We're saying that Ms. Ayvedra is gonna have to do that, however she determines the way to get that done, right? So we, in other areas of this appraisal, we are asking the superintendent to increase and do things. Now, I'm not talking about the financial piece, okay? I'll, I'll address that right now, okay? In Destination District, item 3.2, we're asking the superintendent to reduce the three-year projected deficit by $8 million annually for a three-year period. So we're addressing the deficit. We're looking at cutting that deficit back, and we're, we're, we're holding Ms. Ayvedra accountable to that. So my point here is, I'm very much understanding that right sizing is gonna have to happen down the road. It has to, to include consolidations and closures. That's just a fact of the matter. But do we have to state in this item that, that we have to have a statement that sounds like we need to do it by 2025? And so what, I, I think that asterisk, the part below, says what really our intent is, is that we begin the planning today for that reality. It may require a bond, but I'm, I'm gonna say this, because the truth be, be said, if we don't pass a bond in the future, that right sizing still has to take place, okay? And, and the board needs to know today, because we can't say we're gonna pass a bond and do it. If we don't, we're gonna continue to spend dollars on schools that have no attendance, right? The, the, an action may have to take place. An action may have to take place between now and 2025 that may have to result in a school closure. And that is addressed, I think, elsewhere in, when we say Ms. Ayvedra has the flexibility to decide how she's gonna achieve these goals. If it, in that $8 million deficit piece, if that's the only way to address it, now, we don't want to do it with a plan, and that's what we're saying, right? But the flexibility now belongs to Ms. Ayvedra, okay? So I, I, again, just, and, and I hear it, I see it. But it is a compromise. Can we ju, can we compromise and understand that this is a reality? But that what's more important today is developing a plan for that reality than trying to execute the reality simultaneously while developing a plan? Mr. Rubal, I'll...
Yeah, I just...
Sorry, I haven't had a chance to...
Okay, Ms. Hanani, okay, because I only held off, because I know you have a motion that you wanted to do.
Well, no, I...
I want to continue the conversation.
Yeah, I think right now I'm just gonna...
And then we're gonna need to come up with a motion.
Recollect my, my thoughts.
Oh, we have one.
Um, just a couple of things very quickly that I want to address. Some statements that I made earlier. You know, in terms of the judge opining that there was cause for trial, that's a public opinion. It can be, it can be looked at. That's out already, that's been filed. The other thing that was said is that, you know, some are saying we don't have a plan, but we do have a plan. Ms. Ayvedra literally just said we don't have a plan. But I really want to call attention to one thing that she said that I think that's very, very important. She said, verbatim, "I will not be able to meet that metric." Why are we setting our superintendent up with an evaluation, and she's telling the public, and she's telling the board, "I will not be able to meet that metric"? And we can wrap this with a shiny bow, and we can sprinkle glitter on it, or whatever we do, we do. But the bottom line is, they, they had to put an asterisk there because she can't meet the metric that was listed. She's, she's telling us that. And, you know, this is, we're a board of six right now. We have elections coming up in May. Well, we, we, we don't know what the board's gonna look like. For all we know, that board could determine that they need to close 15% of all facilities by 2025, because that's what it sounds like. Right sizing facilities by 15% by 2025. There's no one that's, that, there's, there's nothing that will tell us right now that another few board members won't come in and say that they want to close. I mean, what is that? But she's, she's just told us, "I cannot meet that metric." I don't think the argument here is whether consolidations are on the horizon. We all want better facilities for our students, every single one of us. We've said that over and over again. We know what our kids deserve. But that's the whole point. We need a plan to get there. And this does not solve that for us. So I, I think this is really not about consolidations. This is not about whether we agree that school closures are, are on the horizon at some point, depending on what's recommended by the district. This is about whether that metric belongs on the superintendent evaluation. As she says, and, and actually, trustee Cole just said, we'd have to vote on that anyway. So he is telling us that she can't meet it. So we're hearing from our board that she can't meet it. We're hearing from her that she can't meet it. Why are we including it?
I didn't say that, for the record.
She, we would have to vote on that anyway, is exactly, were exactly your words. We would have, the board would have to vote on that anyway. I wrote it down. So why are we, why are we evaluating the superintendent on something that the board would vote on anyway? Why are we evaluating the superintendent on what she says she would not be able to meet? So for me, this is about this particular sentence not belonging, just to, to trustee Valade's point, not belonging in this evaluation tool.
Okay, so, yeah, I just...
Mr. Rubal? Yeah, Ms. Aguita, I just have some questions. So when I was at the state, and we were facing cuts that needed to be done, there were one-time tactics that you could use to bring down a deficit that necessarily wouldn't impact long-term financial stability. So one of them was hiring freezes. Is it my understanding that when you do a hiring freeze, that may bring down your immediate deficit down, but in the long term, that's gonna rear its ugly back head in because they're recurring costs?
That's correct.
Correct.
Correct. So if we brought down the $8 million annual, or by $8 million annually, if we did a tactic such as hiring freezes, that would just come back years later, correct?
That's correct. Without closing positions, that would be recurring.
The same can be said for the surplus properties. Mr. Warreniki, what was the sales that we got from the properties we just sold, janitorial homes?
The total for the janitorial homes was approximately $500,000, and then we sold two other properties. I think the total's about $1.5 to $2 million so far.
So we're looking at 1.1, 1.7?
Something like that.
So then, could that then be applied to bringing down the deficit, but that's a one-time cost that we get because it's a selling of one of our properties?
That's correct, because the funding would be allocated into fund balance, and so the, the only purpose of the fund balance would be for one-time transactions.
Shy of eliminating positions, school consolidation slash closures, and, and things of that nature, those are tactics and tools that will, re-recurring savings year after year, correct?
That's correct. And, and for the record, we have been doing that year over year to balance the budget with the existing losses that we, you, you just shared as we moved forward.
So President Velarde, that, that's why the $8 million deficit is, is something that, it's, it's different, because you can do things. I've seen the state do it year over year. I've seen departments do it. I've seen it here locally, where they bring down the costs at one time, it brings down that deficit, they make those short end cuts just to make, but, you know, the budget meeting. And then it, it comes and rears its ugly back, head back in two, three years later. For me, Mr. Collins, Trustee Collins is accurate. And, I mean, I, I don't know if I'm just hearing something different, but Ms. Saavedra, and I've had several conversations on this, it's not that this is impossible, it's that it's a process that has to exist. In year one, we have to look towards artifacts. Year two, we have to evaluate where we're at, see if it's additional planning, what happens. And then year three, we could implement the strategy. And so, I, I, at this point, I think we're just, there's, there's just a difference of opinion on this. I think it's more ideological than is anything else. I think we, unless someone has something else to add, that's why an $8 million deficit decrease is, is not the same to me as what we are looking towards. One is short-term financial stability, one's long-term financial solvency. And that's why I can't support this, this-
And I just want to say, in response to that, one thing that, that we need to also be understanding is that the budget, and, correct me if I'm wrong, about 76% to 78% of the budget is staffing.
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-six percent.
Eighty-six, okay. So, closing or re, I'm starting to get, right sizing, and we're talking facilities, is only addressing a very small percentage of the total budget that we need to address, correct? I mean, if we're talking, I mean, I know we haven't, we're saying we've had some, some success moving that way, but we're still looking at 26-plus is what I heard, the other 28-plus million projected deficit, that if, closing, and I'm just going to say, closing four schools. I know it's right sizing, but I'm going to say, closing four schools, I mean, when it was done before, we were talking 3 million a school, 1.5 to 3 million a school is what we gained?
Approximately 2 million, because the buildings are still-
Right, the buildings are still there, and then we're shifting staff to other schools.
So, yes, that's-
And so, that's part of the plan, Mr. Bali, that I think has to be, because when you're looking at that type of deficit, I don't think right sizing alone is going to do it. And so, when it's 86% is staffing, and now, the fear also is if we don't do something, it's the staffing that goes first. And, and so this is a horrible decision that we're talking about today. But I don't think that the goal that we're saying in the first line alone is going to come near achieving the actual budget that we would need to reduce. I think going up top, that statement says it. But again, when I go back to what I've said before, this is, this is the, the goal or the objective Ms. Saavedra comes up with, how that's going to happen. And, and, and it is correct that major decisions like a school closure or a right sizing effort would require board approval at the time that it happens. That is correct. But for the purpose of a evaluation, I'm thinking that the statement minus the top part would be strong enough to, for our superintendent to succeed, which is the primary purpose of this goal. Going back to our strategic plan, I think it's clear in the strategic document that we just approved, that right sizing has to happen. So it's there in the strategic plan. And then, of course, everything else that I mentioned, I would think that this compromise might be the right thing to do. But at this point, I think it's time, we have a motion and a second on the floor. And so, Mr., or Dr. Osaveda, what is your motion, please? Can you restate that motion?
The motion that I make was to exclude 3.3 from the superintendent's appraisal instrument.
Okay, so-
Dr. Osaveda, I just want to be clear about your motion. So by making that motion, you're actually asking to approve the superintendent's evaluation piece without 3.3?
Yes, that's correct, but I, that's the motion that I said, but I'm happy to amend it. And, yeah, you have, you have something.
Yeah, I do. My motion would be to pass the, approve the superintendent evaluation with language for 3.3 as follows. Strengthen the district's financial solvency by creating a facilities master plan that includes facilities assessment, demographic studies, school boundary outlook, recommended program expansion, and equity assessment and right sizing measures.
Okay, so, Mr., or Dr. Osaveda, would you be willing to rescind your original motion, motion so that we can accept this?
Yes.
Okay, so you will rescind, and-
I, I will rescind my motion effectively immediately.
So you know which are all your motion, and I believe Ms. Hanani, Trustee Hanani is now making a new motion, is that correct?
Yes.
Correct. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
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 Okay, so, that amendment does not pass. So we're going to go back to, we'll need another motion at this point.
I'd be happy to make the motion. Give me one second. I move that the board adopt the superintendent's appraisal instrument and evaluation timeline as presented.
We have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, so this motion passes. We will now move on to-
Just to be clear, it passed 4-2.
I'm sorry?
Just to be clear, it passed 4-2.
Correct, it passed 4-2.
Thank you.
Okay, so are we, we are item eight, consent agenda. Before we, I'll ask if there are any items on the consent agenda that are, need to be pulled at this time. If there is not, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
To approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 6-0. That now takes us to, I don't, is it item nine, Ms. Saavedra? Correct, right? Yes.
Yes, just very quickly, because I know that we're ready to wrap up, just wanted to give you an outlook of possible agenda items in the month of January. We'll be bringing you several reports associated with facilities and construction, workers' compensation, and an internal audit quarterly report. In addition, we'll be having several discussions for the consideration of the calling of school board elections in May, and a number of different items associated with the elections in May. That's it.
All right. Then, that brings us to the end of our meeting. We've come to an adjournment, and I just want to, again, thank our staff for all the great work they've done and being a part of the process that we've just discussed and, and hammered out. And I want to wish everybody Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Thank you all. Meeting is adjourned at 8:27.